Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing while Reverend Ben Tippett gives us an invocation.
Shall we pray? Our Father, we're so grateful for your love for us and we're thankful that we can come to you for the privilege of prayer, for the privilege of serving our community. We thank you for this board and our superintendent. We ask for your direction. We just ask you to give them guidance today as they seek to better our schools and our community. We pray this in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you very much Reverend. Okay, glad to see everybody here. And the first item on our agenda under Presentations, Mr. Rick Dolan, State Forestry Department, to present a check to the board.
Stay as long as you want.
Guys like to see me come, right? I'm Rick Dolan. I'm the Forestry Center Manager for the Waukesha Forestry Center over Alachua, Putnam, Marion, Levy, and Gilchrist Counties. It's my pleasure to submit the enclosed check payment of $20,582.62 to the Putnam County Board of Public Instruction. This payment reflects the distribution of the Willaca and Etnie Creek State Forest receipts for fiscal year 2013-2014 in accordance to Section 589 of Florida statutes. The Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services manages 36 state forests encompassing over 1 million acres. Through a comprehensive resource management plan, we encourage the use of forest lands for recreation as habitat for threatened and endangered plants and animals, for soil and water conservation, and as a source of raw materials for a dynamic wood-using industry. For fiscal year 2013-2014, the department collected approximately $7.5 million from the operations of state forests, including $5.9 million from timber sale revenues and $1.1 million in recreation fees from over 2 million visitors. I hope you find these funds that assist you in carrying out the board's interests and critical responsibilities. Sincerely, Adam H. Putnam, Commissioner of Agriculture.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Tell Mr. Putnam. Yeah, to the chairman.
Oh yeah, that'd be great.
Tell Mr. Putnam to start planting more trees.
We're trying.
While it's still in there.
We're not still a member of the National Forest Academy and Schools, are we? We still are? Good.
You have a nice afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was nice. I wish we had six more of yours. Lined up. Okay, item number two under Presentations has been scratched. Item number three is Ms. Linda Osborne, Program Coordinator, Migrant Education Program. Presentation of check from the Mexican consulate to the migrant program. More money floating around, woo. It's more money, but I'm gonna keep it, okay?
That's okay. It's for our community.
Good afternoon, Board Members. Superintendent Chris Well. If nobody comes forward and lets you know how great the migrant program is, this is my duty to do so. So I'm going to talk about a grant that we just recently received. It's the Institute for Mexicans Abroad, known as the AMABECAS, and it's an agency of the Mexican government's Foreign Ministry that supports Mexicans and Mexican-Americans living in the United States. This money that we got will be used to promote and enhance educational opportunities for our Mexican population. And right now, the service that we provide is located in Crescent City and we do English language literacy skills, GED, Spanish, and English. So this grant is possible through the writer Lucia Valdivia Sanchez. And Lucia is our contact with the Mexican consulate in Orlando. So I'd like to let her say a few words also.
Good afternoon, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. Like Ms. Linda says, it's our job and duty to tell you how wonderful, wonderful everything is in Crescent City and in Putnam County. And we have been part of the Plaza Comunitarias, or what we call the Community Network of Learning Community Centers, since 2001 in Putnam County with the Mexican consulate. And we do offer the services that Ms. Linda says. We write the grant and we get money and we have gotten throughout the years $24,000, $25,400. So this is money that we get. We just write the grant and we say what things we're going to do with the money and they have to be earmarked for Mexican and Mexican-Americans. And I will tell you a little bit of what has been, what happened last year. Last year, we had one of our most successful years. A hundred percent of this money goes directly to our students. That's why we call it a BECA. A BECA is a scholarship that goes directly to the student to offset expenses. And we had 12 GED graduates. We have seven primaria and secundaria. This is covering up to basic education between primary, learning to read and write, up to ninth grade. Three certified nursing assistants, two cosmetologists, one sound recording technologist, one accountant, and one Spanish teacher that is now working at Palatca High. So that is what we did and that is what the money that the Mexican government does for our people in Crescent City. We had a, the mayor of Crescent City did a proclamation for Farm Worker Week to appreciate everything. Ms., how do you say it? Jorgerson was there in last March to see all of our graduates and we appreciate everything. So if you have any questions, I would be glad to answer anything and so would Ms. Linda.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
How many times have you or Linda been a national-recognized worker for Putnam County?
Several, but we have been international three times.
Okay, I just wanted to.
That is definitely the dynamic duo of migrant education.
Yes, absolutely.
Between you, you have how many years with us? Yeah, I was gonna say at least forty.
I have eighteen. I started, Linda's my mentor.
But they have won repeatedly national awards and.
State, national, and international.
International, yes.
Absolutely.
And I love going down to South Putnam and watching the results of your work. It's really, it's heartwarming. It is. And I love, that's one of my favorite places to go, is your graduations.
Well, our grant dollars this year was $8,000. So.
That's awesome. Ms. Jorgerson, would you go down so we can get it?
And take a picture with us.
Move your chair down there today.
Lucy, does Linda ever let you do anything?
I like the grant. I tell the people what I'm going to do with the money.
Two at it too. Very nice. Okay, we are now upon the public comment portion of our meeting. And first up is Travis G. Roberts.
Hello.
Hi.
I asked you guys last, in January this past, if you guys could help with funds. I know that's on the agenda for today, but I wondered to see if I had mentioned about you guys, if you could match what I would raise. And wondering if anything had been bought up on that.
Well, that's what we're gonna discuss later. We, it has to be on the agenda for us to openly discuss it.
Okay.
If you wanna wait around, I'll be happy to let you give your input then.
Okay, 'cause we're, two other gentlemen right here, you guys stand up. These are two of the band members there. They were up there working with me all last weekend and they raised about 1,200 bucks, almost 1,300 bucks cooking out ribs.
Great.
So they're willing to work for it. But I just wanna know if anything had been.
Nothing. That'll be done this afternoon. We'll discuss it. Thank you. Next is Carrie S. Cribs.
Thank y'all for seeing me this morning. The extended hours of the school. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. Never done this before. I made a petition online and I emailed it to every single one of y'all this morning. But the petition, I'll read you the petition. It says, "A child's education requires many hours devoted to each child." So for each child's, so for school hours to have been extended would have been a great idea in order to devote more time to children. However, the outcome of the hours have been changed, has in fact done the opposite of what was intended. As School District spokesman Kirk Collier said, "The reason for the hours being extended was to provide more instructional time for students and common planning time for teachers. By adding 35 minutes to the school hours, leaving very little time for parents to have done, to have one-on-one time with their children for their educational purposes as well as extracurricular activities, most children ride the bus and some have an hour-long bus ride, combined with homework, getting off at 5:00, getting home at 5:00 PM, as well as parents getting off work at 5:00 PM, it makes a very stressful outcome." And to devote time for your children to work on the areas that they're struggling in puts it very difficult for, to help them in their weaknesses. We as parents of the Putnam County School Board petitioned the extended hours of the time. There is no time to devote in each area of educational weaknesses. Parents have very little time to get homework finished, cook dinner, before it's time to take a bath and go to bed, not to mention there's no time for extracurricular activities such as church, sports, football, soccer, baseball, gymnastics, and cheer. Well-rounded education can only be achieved through academics, music, art, social, and physical skills, received through the school and home life. Our children are not performing at their best due to the extended hours of the school day, leaving minimal time for one-on-one education at home, development, and development on their, on other life skills. Reverting the school hours of Putnam County schools back to the original time will allow children to have more time to enjoy themselves throughout the day and parents to assist them. I did a petition online. So through Facebook, I have 100, or 510 signatures. I have comments made by parents. And Melrose is an A school, so there's no reason that they should have ever been extended. And I would really love for it to be reverted.
Thank you.
Can we address why we extended the date? It's countywide, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Middle and high school don't have any problem with it. It's really done well for them. For example, Palaka High School, it cost us no money and they added a class. So they have seven class periods and five minutes between classes to get to classes. And it's really, and they've redone their lunch and it's been awesome. The kids love it. Everybody seems to really love it. So I think it's just a problem in the elementary schools.
Yes, man, it is.
We've talked a little bit about what we want to do. Certainly, other schools and other districts go longer than we do. This was our effort to, as she said, extend the school day for the students to give them additional time on task, which is what research says improves their learning and their scores. And also to give planning time for teachers during the school day instead of trying to do it first thing when they get there in the morning or at the end of the day when the kids leave. And it changes hard and it is something that we've tried. And we certainly could do a workshop if you would like to give you all the information. I don't wanna take up a lot of time now since it's really not on the agenda. But research says that this is the best way to do it. I do understand how the parents feel. Honestly, I thought that getting home later in the afternoon would keep them from having to hire babysitters or do daycare because of the time that kids got off the bus and the times a parent gets, get home. And it, I guess it really hasn't worked out that way, at least for some parents who, whose schedules are a little bit different. So it is something that we're looking at and we can bring that report to the board at a later meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Research also shows that high school learns better later in the day and elementary school students learn better earlier in the day, which is the exact opposite of what Putnam County has done.
We've tried, we put that online as a questionnaire and over eighty percent of the respondents did not want us to do that. We were ready to do it.
You wind up with children, small children in the dark and in the morning time at very bad hours and they don't have, you don't know who's at a bus stop a lot of times and it's.
The students who work at the high school, it cuts down on the hours they can work after school. There's a lot, there's a lot. It's a lot.
I understand that, but now my kid gets off the bus at dark. Wendy's kid gets off way later than that. It's ridiculous, really.
Well, we can, the superintendent said she'll review it and we will review it. That's sincere. Change doesn't happen overnight.
Oh, I understand that.
Took a while to get to where we could add the time and if we're gonna undo it, that'll take some time too. But we hear ya. We've got your stuff on file. And tweak me in a couple of months if you haven't heard anything.
All right, thank you very much.
She's not the only one. I've heard that.
Again, elementary, elementary is, everybody else seems to like it.
I've heard it from a lot.
And you know what else, folks? No matter what we decide to do, it doesn't matter what we decide to do, somebody does, or somebody's doesn't like it for whatever reason. So we just, we really do do the best we can. Okay, I'm gonna leave Ms. Sanford till the discussion part and we're gonna go to the consent agenda. Board, I'd ask you to look at item J1. On item J1, there is student one and student two recommended for expulsion. And for circumstances beyond our control, student one's case was not heard today. So we're pulling student one and we're voting on student two when we do the consent agenda. Is that clear?
Yes.
Do we need a motion for that, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Madam Chair, I move that we remove student one from item J1 on the consent agenda.
I second that motion.
Motion second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Carries five zero. Anybody from the audience like to pull anything from our consent agenda for discussion? Board members, Ms. Carpet?
Yes, H6.
Okay, Ms. Snicky?
H8.
Okay, Mr. Buckles?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Cummings?
I'm Mr. Wright.
Where did I get that from?
I don't know. Okay, did we get H6 and H8?
H8, six and eight.
H6, H8. No, I'm good.
Okay, and I don't have any others. I'll entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda with the exception of items H6 and H8.
Second.
Motion and second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries five zero. Go ahead with discussion on H.
Renee, I probably need to ask you some questions, I guess. Are you in charge of the Smart Horizons? No, okay, Helen, whoever. I just have a couple of questions about this. Tell me what it is. I mean, I know in my head what it is. I'm thinking maybe is this being used to take the place of GED exit option and give students a chance that are way behind to?
Okay, what this is, is an opportunity for students who have put in the work and put in the time. They have the credits, they have the GPAs. They have not been successful at passing the state mandated testing that is required for graduation. So what happens within this program is these students are afforded two opportunities. One, because they have shown that they are workers. They come to school. What they have not been able to show is an ability to take a standardized test. So these students will take four courses from Horizons that will give them a diploma that will also have a CTE, a Career Tech FOCUS. So they're going to get some opportunities for employment. Secondly, they will get a standard diploma because Horizons has, is a SACS-accredited, Advanced Ed-accredited institution.
And by the military it is accredited.
So it is an accepted diploma. What it will enable us to do is for those select group of students who do the work, who come to school, who follow the rules, but just aren't test takers, to earn a standard diploma.
So they're ha, are they having to repeat like I saw?
No, CTE. Well, now that is offered if they didn't pass it. But the targeted students, they have to.
Well, you said they had the credits and they had the GTA. They just haven't passed the FCAT or the FS. Okay, so are they taking courses that will help them pass that test?
They don't have to pass the FCAT.
They're going to get a regular diploma without having passed it.
They will get a standard diploma from Horizons because Horizons is not a public school.
It's like a private school.
It's a pri, quite honestly, it's like a private school. So what happens is we're affording the students, and it is a select targeted group of students who, for some reason or another, after 12 years of education, have not been able to pass those tests. I'm sure as guidance counselor, you remember those kids.
So that makes sense why we're only getting 20 slots.
It's kinda like.
Because there are just a few of those. It's not.
It's the old, you know. It's the same type of get your kids out, you know, give them an option that they're not gonna, so they can get in the military the whole time.
And they, they're not leaving with a certificate of completion because they couldn't pass the test. They're gonna have a diploma. I think it's wonderful.
That's great. I just wonder who's gonna make the determination of who will get into the program.
That's gonna be with supportive guidance counselors.
Guidance counselors will have to, yeah.
Guidance counselors are the frontline folks here.
Absolutely. Because I had a couple every year that we cried over and prayed over and everything we could.
And you just tearish your heart out.
I can tell you five right now that that happened to.
Is it something that they get in when they're a senior?
Correct. So what happens is they're staying in school, we are earning the FTE, and they also have the opportunity to move forward in their life.
It's a win-win.
So basically, the second semester senior gets, you get a call from the guidance, so these kids aren't gonna pass.
And they've already worked.
Well, they already know that.
I mean, the guidance counselors have been working with them. The very nice thing about this organization is that they want us to continue to promote the children to take the test.
Sure.
And if the child that, two days before graduation, passes the FCAT, which has happened. We've all done the happy dances.
Get the scores back until they, yeah. Then they'll get the Palaka High School diploma or the Interlochen High School.
Correct, or the Interlochen. And we have 12 more months to use that slot for another child.
Right. Well, and what I like about it, it's not for the kid that has played around for four years or six years and then they wanna go into GED exit option and get, right. This is for the child that truly deserves it, that has worked and worked and worked.
And GED exit option now is no longer a standard diploma.
And that's what I was afraid of. I was afraid this was taking the place of that.
This is a standard diploma for those students that are workers, that have worked right up to, right now.
Well, I'm glad it's a possibility.
Will it begin with the 2015 graduates or 2016? Okay, so it'll be.
Tomorrow, that's.
Tomorrow, if you approve it.
Get it started.
And these kids won't walk, though. They won't walk with their school.
That will be a determination that.
Well, I hope they will.
That will be, as I said.
We let certificates of completion walk. They go to school to do this or is it this home?
They can do either. They.
So we'll have a lab at each school that they, that's, has a teacher in it that can.
Right.
Oh, okay. If they keep going to school, then yeah.
Any further discussion or questions, board?
Sounds like a good plan.
I'll entertain the motion to.
I move we approve.
Approve item H6.
I second it.
Motion and second on the board, on the floor. On the board floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries five zero. The next removed item was item H8.
Yeah, I pulled H8. I, this is a school improvement plans. And they are amazing. I can't say I read every single one of them, but I did have an opportunity to do some research on one particular one. I just chose, 'cause I'm doing, getting my master, so it was a whole class of, it was perfect timing for me. So Kelly Smith was able to give me that school improvement. I just wanted to point out, 'cause I've talked to Helen about it, because it's something that I don't know if the board realizes how much work goes into it and how much data and how much, it's not just a plan that's just put together. There's real specifics. And in particular, like with Kelly Smith, I needed some questions answered and I was able just to call a teacher and say, "How exactly are you implementing this? How, how do you see these school?" I mean, and it wasn't just, "I have no clue what you're talking about." It's a living, breathing document that I just feel is a huge part of the school mission and goal and it's not just something that's put on a shelf, it's ignored for the rest of the year. So I just wanted to commend, the reason I pulled it is just because I realized how much time went into it. So all the CRTs, principals, APs, and leadership that put their time and energy because it's quite a document. It's not something you just, and if you wanted to really see some data and understand why numbers and why things the way they are, you can look at these documents and say, "Wow, now I can really pull apart the, you know, the nuts and bolts and really understand it." So that's just the reason I just wanted to commend all the hard work that went into those school improvement plans, so.
Yeah, I agree. I know that they're lengthy and they're involved. And I was on the board 20 years ago when the legislature, in its wisdom, decided that this was gonna fix education and everybody had to do it. And we used to have to sit here in each school, it went on for weeks, months, would get, talk about dog and pony shows and have to go through their whole plan and what they were gonna do. So this is less painful for us, but I do say it's, I don't know about painful for them, but it's very involved. And it is, they did do a great job.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve, approve item H8.
I second.
It's motion and second on the floor. Any more, any more conversation? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries five zero. Okay. When necessary, the board will go into emergency session and it is necessary. From taking us out of regular session, we're going into emergency session. The first item on our emergency agenda is the approval of the 2014-15 Personnel Allocation. Change number 17, justification, 17 F1, justification, explanation, time-sensitive.
So move. Second.
Motion and second on the floor. Any conversation or questions? There being none, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Carries five zero. Item two, approval of a one-time special open enrollment for Florida Blue Health Insurance for legally married same-sex couples who were married prior to January 5th, 2015. Justification, explanation, time-sensitive. I have a question. Where did the January 5th date come in?
Blue Cross? Blue Cross? I think it was Blue Cross.
Because they couldn't even get married in the state till after that, so it should be a moot point. Right, there shouldn't be anybody legally married in this state before that date. They're getting, so will it change next year? In other words, people who, same-sex couples who get married during this calendar year, will they be able to add their spouse? Open enrollment? Okay, good.
The state of Florida has to, we have to recognize. Well, the state of Florida has to, we have to recognize.
Yeah, I think we have to, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept, what number is it?
L2.
L2.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Wright?
Yeah, I just had a little sidebar conversation here with our attorney, and we think that this is statutory.
It is.
So, so it's not, just for the public, there's, there's not a moral argument here. There's not a philosophical argument here. It is, it is statutory. So we are somewhat bound to, um, to, to agree with this. So that's, that's where, that's where that is. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Florida statute supersede you, so you don't really have a choice.
Yeah, yeah, the bosses are in Tallahassee on this one, so.
Federal statute will supersede.
Yeah, okay, all right. I just wanted to make that clear.
Any further comments? For motion and a second on the floor to approve item L2. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say no. Carries five zero. Item L3, approval to hire consultant to provide training, justification, time sensitive.
I make a motion, we approve.
I'll second, but I have a question.
Okay, there's a motion and second on the floor. Mr. Wright?
Well, what are we training for? Just FYI?
CRTs on vocabulary acquisition?
I, I don't have it on mine, so.
It would be the, uh-
It says, uh-
Literacy, uh, vocabulary acquisition.
Provide training for the district CRTs on vocabulary acquisition.
Okay, all right. Okay, okay, all right, I'm good.
Okay, any further discussion? There's a motion and a second on the floor to approve item L3. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say no. Carries five zero. We're out of emergency session and back into our regular meeting. And we're on to the old business discussion agenda. We're going to be discussing- whether or not to put the Campbell Building up on the market for sale. Just as a point of information, we did receive an offer from someone that was interested in purchasing it. But because we are stewards of the taxpayer money, we are bound to get the best, most money we can. So we, after speaking with our attorney, we have it on the agenda to approve putting it on the market if that's what we decide to do. And we have to decide whether we're gonna leave it up there for 30, 60, or 90 days, at the end of which time, any offers received will be considered.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a point of order.
Yes.
The discussion of the input approval of the Campbell Building does not appear under the discussion of new business. It technically appears-
No, it's on old business.
No, it technically appears under the consent agenda, which we already approved.
No, M.
Discussion, old business. There's an M up here too.
Where?
It's a page.
Oh, okay. Point of order removed, because Mr. Wright's glasses need to be increased?
Yep. I know about that.
All right. All right, that's good. It's just split pages, right, okay.
Yeah.
All right, my bad.
It was my understanding that we were going to let Mr. Douglas, our attorney, handle negotiations of, of, of taking the, the-
Proposals.
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 Yeah, I was, I was comfortable with the 60 days. I did speak to Ms. Headstrom about it, and she thought 60 days too. And so we had a discussion, and I felt comfortable with offers for 60 days and then to make decisions. So come back to the Board, is that correct?
Uh, that, that is fine to do. 60 days is an acceptable time period. There are also some administrative rules that are on point that, if it's the Board's decision to put the building up for sale, we can work with the Board and the district staff to follow in regard to the proper appraisals that are required. If property is sold under 500,000, there are certain rules between 500 and a million. There are certain rules and over a million. There are different rules regarding whether an appraisal is needed. If so, there could be multiple appraisals that are needed. We have one appraisal already that was done in September of last year. That one is timely enough that we can use as one of them. If we need a second one, we can go about getting that.
That's why we wanted you to do it.
I don't know anything about appraisals. We're gonna have to get the experts in on that. But if, if that's required under the administrative rules, then certainly we will do what is required there and report back to the Board. But I guess the threshold question is, does the Board want to sell the building?
Yes.
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 60 days agreeable with everyone? On, in a motion? To put the Campbell Building on market for 60 days with our attorney as the receiver of proposals, as well as making sure everything is done the way it needs to be done.
And if 60 days isn't, we don't feel like that we've gotten what you bring us, then we still have the right to-
Extend.
Extend.
And could I just say, I think, Mr. Gettrill, would you come up for just a minute, please? I would like Scott to talk about who he's talked with in Tallahassee. People need to understand that we are not allowed to continue to keep this building. And I would like you to explain, you explain it better than I do. So could you explain why, and maybe if you know the name of the person you talked to or the department?
Yeah, it was Mark Jeter up in DOE, and we deal with them quite a bit. They're our liaison on the facility side. We had this conversation when we started talking about purchasing this facility. It had to do with our allowable ancillary square footage. That's based on our number of students. We're allowed so many per square feet, per student, transportation, maintenance, purchasing, the Campbell Building, those are all considered ancillary square footage. We're probably double our allowable based on our current enrollment. So the deal we made with DOE was, they said, "Yes, we'll allow you to purchase the building." The agreement is, upon the move, once you guys get settled in, we're gonna require you guys sell that property to get it off your ancillary square footage, so.
Is there a timeframe on that, Scott?
Uh, no, it said there wasn't. It was just, we need to actively be pursuing the sale of that property. They didn't stipulate a timeline, which is good for us.
I think just once again, I wanted the Board and the public to be aware that decisions that we make aren't always ours, that the Department of Education, through the legislature and the laws that they make, guide and direct and, and make us do the things that we sometimes have to do. We couldn't keep the building if we wanted to. We are required to sell it, and I just wanted that very clear.
I have a question, Scott.
Yes, ma'am.
The campus that we just leased to St. Augustine Technical-
Correct.
For 20 years.
Yes, ma'am.
Was that considered ancillary?
It, it is, and I had that conversation with Mark.
I thought we couldn't rent ancillary property out. When somebody wanted to rent the Campbell Building, I was told it's illegal to rent it.
Well, that, that was the deal that we made with DOE with the purchase of this facility. We already owned the, what is now purchasing.
It was a school. It was and is a school building.
With the purchase of additional ancillary square footage. Again, we already own purchasing, and that was a conversation we had too about, you know, they don't make us sell off property because our enrollment's down. What we had got grandfathered in, this building, this property and this facility was new. And that was the deal that we made as far as minimizing some that we have. And again, we're more than double our allowable, even when we sell the Campbell Building, so.
I understand all that, but then are they gonna come back and say we have some, I mean, is something in writing, or is this just?
Madam Chair, I have a question about, about sell price. Was there any formula or range in which they said, "You have to be within so much of, of, you know?"
No, there wasn't any, there wasn't any stipulation over the sale of the property other than, you know, we had to have an appraisal and they were-
Appraisals, so whatever market bears, market bears.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
We have deeded school board property over the years for $10. And, you know, it's, it's whatever the Board wants to do. I think we need to try to recoup all the money we can on this purchase that we can-
Yes.
In this case. But I know over the years, we donated the old Johnson School to the county. We donated some, uh, school property out in, in, in Grandin. I mean, just, it's not uncommon.
Satsuma, or was it, I guess it was Pomona Park, we gave the old Pomona Park School in the town of Willacca, City Hall was-
Well, if you look at the history of the school district, there, there was a little school in every municipality, even municipalities that don't even exist in our county anymore.
We probably still have some there.
So over the years, we have donated buildings, and, and the Board has done that in the past repeatedly for the community, if it was for the good of the community or, or the wishes of the Board. So certainly, this building is a little different. It is an historic building. It cannot be torn down. It has the name Campbell, and, and that's like Campbell Highway, if you go out 207. So there's some history there, and because it's a historical building, as we did the improvements that we had to do along the way, like a roof, I mean, if it's leaking, you gotta fix it. Elevator, we had to put in to make ADA. Windows, because we were having such a problem with our heating and cooling system and the cost. So those are things we did out of necessity. If we stayed in that building, it would cost us a tremendous amount of money to make the improvements we needed. And that building being historical, and as old as it is, almost 100 years old, and it is not designed for technology. Technology is our future, and, and it is something we really had to look at, at how are we gonna meet the demand and the needs of the future of Putnam County students. So those are just some things that I, I like to point out so that the public understands as well.
And I did try to do the horse trade. As soon as we signed the lease for the purchasing, which is the old Mosley, I did call Mark and say, "Hey, we're leasing this property back out. Can we keep the Campbell Building?" And again, we ran the numbers, and we were still, you know, more than double, and I got stiff on, but I, I did call and at least ask.
I believe there's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries five zero. Going into the discussion of new business, and number one, this discussion and input on funding for the Crescent City Junior/Senior High School Band Uniforms and Equipment. And there was a speaker, there were two speakers actually, that wanted to speak on this topic. Mr. Roberts, if you would come up, and Ms. Jolene, you can come too. Okay, Ms. Jolene, why don't you come up and talk to us?
Hello again. Hello. Okay, so I was asked to bring some numbers with me. Is that what you guys would like to see?
Yep.
Okay. I did make some copies of, I do have some copies somewhere. I just want to say, I, I understand the state of Florida says that we are an extracurricular activity. I gave you a copy of our basic yearly schedule so that you could see what we do in a given year. There are things that are added on special occasions. I don't know what other groups are doing. I'm sure they're doing as much, if not more. But we are not sitting around idle. I have a few more. And I promise you that anything that you are able to help us with, it, it's not wasted. We, we are busy year-round. We are doing something every month of every year. And I have the students involved in activities. Our mission statement, our vision statement at school says that CCJSHS will become a place where students lead, take ownership of their education, and our school family displays school pride and a collaborative spirit. And I can't think of any other group that does that better than we. We have leaders. These two students behind me have been recognized in multiple honor bands in Alabama and in Georgia. Just recently, Christian attended Honor Band in Troy University at Troy, Alabama. He was the only Putnam County student to make it into the top band. And he was second chair of baritone saxophone, and he was the only one in Putnam County made it into the top band. Donald Michael has also been first chair in Valdosta with his bass clarinet. Now, these are honor bands where we have multiple states involved. It's not just students from a few schools. So we, we are, you know, Crescent City music is, is, is climbing back. There was a time in Putnam County, and if you've been around here, you know, when our bands were fantastic, when we were here in the 80s, I mean, every school was doing, was just doing great. I don't know what happened over the years, but I'm here, and I don't plan on leaving. And so this is, you know, this is not gonna end for me. This is a vision that I, I really am strong about. Band is what saved me. It's what kept me in school. I haven't heard any adult say, "I can't wait to get to algebra class today." That's the only reason I'm going to school, is to get to algebra.
True, wasn't I?
Okay, it's not. It's because of music. It's because they're involved in something else. Okay.
When is the last time your band had a complete uniform?
Uh, this is my sixth year, and we haven't, since I've been there.
So you're just piecing stuff together?
We did that last year. There are two old sets. One is actually from another school first, and then Crescent City put some patches over the other school's name, although those are all falling apart. And since I didn't have enough of one uniform to uniform all of my band, I put like my officers in one set and the rest of the band in another. At least that's how I justified it when they were like, looking at us crazy. But they wanted to be in uniforms, and so we tried. We tried to put it together.
If you were to purchase uniforms for the entire band, what would that cost? Just uniforms, not you, not the instruments, just the uniform?
Um, I've, I had an old quote from August of 13, "Prices aren't too different now." I would want to get 60 uniforms. Right now, I have about 40 people in band. And by the way, 2/3 of my band are Mexican. I'm just throwing that out there. Her son was one of them. I'm just saying. Okay, we have a big minority group, and I love it because they're fantastic. So I wanted to get 60 uniforms so that over the next couple of years, when I have people come in, I would have uniforms to put them in. And when you get them all at one time, at least the colors and all are, are gonna match, okay? So I'm looking ahead. So if I were to get 60, and I, I really went the least expensive route, which is getting blouses rather than real jackets, which jackets are about $105 apiece.
And they're hot.
The blouses are 65, and they still look nice. The one that's highlighted is the one that I would be looking for, and we would get it in our colors. Okay?
That looks good.
But I thought they looked nice. It would, it would service well. They would probably be a little easier to keep clean, I'm hoping, and they're definitely less expensive. So for 60 blouses, I needed to get 15 skirts, because I do have some religious affiliations out there, and they wear skirts. 45 bibers, which are the black pants that go underneath. 60 pair of shoes and 60 gloves, and it would be right around 8,000.
And you have how much in your booster account?
I do not have a booster program.
Oh, so he was just helping?
No, he, he is an advocate.
That's awesome.
That's fantastic, 'cause I have had none. I've, you know, I've put it out there. Any fundraising and all that we've been doing, I've done, we've done. And it's, it's, it's a lot of work, and I don't mind. I mean, but we've only had little bits at a time. We, we don't raise enough to get a chunk. I only have two, three students who own their own instruments, so the school, we have provided their instruments. I provide their reeds, their straps, the drumsticks, the drumheads, the books, the music, everything. That is what we struggle to fundraise for, and we just don't have enough to do everything. So that's why I'm coming to you guys and hoping that you can help us, because we're doing everything else. We're not sitting around doing nothing. We've done, and we're taking care of every other need. Really just want this.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent.
Well, here, here's the issue. This has been an ongoing issue for years and years and years and years with our bands, with drama and what they want, with all of our football, basketball, baseball, soccer, track, volleyball, you name it. The school district provides the salary for the instructor. That teacher usually teaches band during the day, teaches music, choral, whatever courses match the course code that's given to us by the Department of Education stating that we can offer those classes. Certainly, coaches usually are PE teachers, or some of them are deans. There are different positions that we would hire them for, and then their extracurricular activity is coaching, 'cause they're not required to do that. And certainly, we pay the supplement for those coaches as we do for band directors. This year, I think we even sponsored some money so some of them could go to some of the conferences, the band conferences, and I think we sponsored the money for some of the students to go to Troy, Alabama. And, you know, there are things that we try to do. And certainly, we wanna help everybody, but anything that's extracurricular has always been performed by the boosters club. Now, s- some schools have great boosters clubs and have been able to provide- Now, some schools have great boosters clubs and have been able to provide everything, including letter jackets for, you know, all of their, all of their participants. And it varies from year to year. I'm sure you all remember Ms. Barber, Joanne Barber, was a board member for a number of years. And every single board meeting, we heard about the Interlochen High School Band and what their needs were. It's true all over our county. We are a small, poor district, and beyond being able to pay for the instructor to instruct during the day in a class that is associated with an approved Department of Education course code number, which we are required by law to do, anything after that is extra. And as much as I feel it's extremely important and would love for you all to say you want to give money, first of all, we need to check with Shannon and Rhonda, see how much money we have, if any. Secondly, whatever you give to them, you're gonna have to give to everybody else. Their football team, basketball, baseball. Once you start, then everybody's gonna come and want some money from you. I'm just telling you.
Well, and most of those already have booster clubs, though. I see what you mean. I've been there during that.
I'm trying to give you the full picture of what we're talking about here. We want to do everything for everybody, certainly. And let me clear up some misconceptions that I think Mr. Roberts wrote about. The money that we did this building with is capital outlay dollars. If I wanted to use it all to pay teachers or buy books or do the band, I couldn't. Okay, the state, somebody told me, I haven't read your paper, but anyway, the state tells us the categories that we spend our money in. So even if I wanted to use the dollars that we spent on this building for something else, I couldn't. They're capital outlay dollars. They can't be spent on textbooks, teacher salaries, band uniforms. You see what I'm saying? So we, you are bound by the categories that the, that the state sets for us. And certainly, 80% of our, our dollars goes to our personnel to pay salaries. The 20% that's left over is very categorical. And Rhonda's not, Rhonda's not here today. Shannon is here, if you want to ask her some questions. You can do whatever you want, because you're the board. The issue would be, if you decide today to give them $8,000, $10,000, $1,000, what we have to know from finance is, since it wasn't budgeted for in this year's budget, do we even have money available that, that you could do that? So...
Well, first of all, I'd like to say, I hate to, I don't like to argue, but the money that was spent on this building, I don't think it was capital outlay. I think it was more renovation, and, and it was capital outlay. But it could also have been used, according to Rhonda, which she told me, for a couple of other things. It wasn't just categorical for this. Also, I think you'll find that 80% of our budget is categorical. And of what's left, that's not categorical, that we can spend however we want. 80% of that goes to our salaries. So it's 20% of 20% that we have, which is not a lot of money, that we have leeway with. But the board, we just accepted a check for $20,000, and I sure would love to split it in three for the bands.
That money, I think, Shannon, correct me if I'm wrong. That money that comes in is specifically for...
What projects? What project?
It comes from the National Association of Forestry and Schools.
I know, but example. What kind of project?
It's earmarked. It comes in every year, and I can't remember. We've got so many accounts and so many things where dollars go. I would have to have Rhonda give you, she can give you a written report, where when we receive money, most of the time, it's already designated by the Department of Education where that money is to go. I mean, that's not free money that you've got today, anymore than the money they got for their grant is free money. It's for a specific purpose.
May I add something?
Whatever we want with it, that's what he said.
I'm sorry, you're talking about, you know, like having to do the same thing for Interlochen and Palatka. But, you know, Interlochen has a stake in their concessions at games. We don't get any of that. I know that they get, Palatka, I believe, gets some of their gate money.
Yes.
We don't get any of that.
How do you go about getting it?
That was something that was done years and years and years ago.
But that's why they would need the same things that we need out where I am. Our economically, you know, deprived students are far greater than Interlochen and Palatka.
That's true.
I went through this identical problem. I went through this identical problem when I was a school superintendent where Ms. Chriswell sits. And I was directed by the board to look at and see if there were any discrepancies, such as, does a school have a concession stand? Does another one give gate receipts? Does another one? And I found out that Crescent City High School did not get as much money. And we appropriated a sum of money that's as much as you're talking about, a little more, and sent it down there. And then I wound up in all kinds of terrible sunshine law accusations and things. It went on for a year and had the state come in and train. Doesn't mean this is gonna happen now. But I am of the opinion that, that we can find some common ground, but we need to know where she can actually divert money from, if that's...
I mean, I'm all for giving everybody, every sport, drama, oh my gosh. And what's happening with the drama here in Palatka and their needs is incredible.
We gave them $60,000.
And they came to us asking for more. I'm just telling you. There's a never-ending need to help our students in the activities they participate in after school, and all of them are important. And I want to give it to them all. I'd like to fund them all. Now, we don't make that kind of money in Putnam County that we can fund them all. So you have to determine as a board, when somebody comes to you, what you're gonna do for them. But before you can authorize giving them money, you have to look at our finance department. I do not make a move on a daily basis without getting Rhonda and Shannon involved and saying, okay, I'm thinking about this. And I don't even think about things right now. If I didn't plan it in this year's budget, I don't even talk to them about it, because I know there's no money. So I ask them to start a file at the beginning of every year. Here's things I'm thinking about. Can we put it down for next year? So I'm just telling you, it's, it's not like we have some endless stream of money that we can pull from. And if you decide today to designate money for them, and I'm all for it. I want them to have beautiful uniforms and wonderful instruments. And this is just the beginning, the uniforms. And they need instruments.
We have been providing for ourselves for the last six years just about everything else that I've needed. I just can't get this chunk of money at one time. Okay, but I haven't been here in the last six years asking for anything. I have done, we've taken care of everything else.
And most, most of the groups come to me and ask me for money, and I bring Rhonda down, and we look, and there's no money. They don't ever get to this point, because they've come to my office first and sat down with our chief financial officer to look at the budget and try to see if there's anything here.
I'll be honest with you, Phyllis, we've got a chunk of money. The board, if anybody wants to look at the budget and see what's under board, school board, we can, we can certainly come up with some money. Nikki, please go ahead, I'm sorry.
First of all, Ms. Higginbotham is here, the principal, and I've been at that school for 12 years. I saw the band go to nothing, zero, nobody involved. So Ms. Sanford has worked for the past six years to reestablish something that did not have anything. And the ability, the thing that's very frustrating, she has no ability to work the concession stands. Athletic director years ago shut out the band. They can't work the concession. They get no ticket money, they get nothing. But they're providing every entertainment at that football game now. So of course, they should get a chunk of that money, if not. But this is a big thing. Five years ago, this board gave $25,000 to build a baseball field. And the reason that I justified giving that money is because the community raised the money. They had $100,000 worth of donations and people. So of course, we can do our part. If they're gonna make their efforts, then I can justify saying, you know what? We can give some, because they worked their butts off to do it, just like the baseball team and their dugout. We did it because Mr. Overturf was on that board, and he made an effort, and he worked, and they lined up all this volunteer work, all this volunteer equipment, $150,000. And we gave money from the board. So I know, I can tell anybody no, but this program has nothing. And they shouldn't be punished, because the teacher that left 12 years ago gave them nothing. And then the school has had a lot of financial issues they're trying to work out. So there's no money in athletics, and that's why I was gonna ask Ms. Higginbotham to speak and say, they have issues not their fault. But if they can raise some money, and we can say, hey, we're going to raise some money, or we can say $4,000 or $2,000, we did it for the baseball dugout. We did it for the baseball.
Oh, I know. They also did it for the Palatka High School drama. We hired Mr. Pignato on the side and paid extra money for it.
Was that a motion you just made?
He actually hasn't taken any of that money. He's put it all into the program. He has not gotten a salary.
Why can't the band boosters run the concession stands?
Well, it's something that we can look at for next year. As Ms. Cummings had alluded to, we are trying to take care of some issues that had arisen before I arrived there. And we are in the process of using those funds to help recoup that debt, that loss. But it is definitely something that we can look at next year. We don't get funding for athletics either, and there are certain things that athletics needs. We don't even have a soccer field right now. Our boys have been practicing in the front in the trees, because they weren't allowed to practice down at YMCA anymore. So we're looking at trying to get something set up for that as well. We do have the practice football field, but, you know, there's just lots of things, and it just, it compounds when you start talking about that. The band program there, I was actually at Crescent City when the band program went away the first time. And it was, you know, they didn't have hardly anything at that time either. So I'm well aware of that. And Ms. Sanford and all the students have worked very hard with fundraising and doing any and everything they can while still maintaining a positive flow to attend, to attend the competitions and to do everything they can. Luckily for us, Rotary in Crescent City has agreed to do a spaghetti dinner. Well, it's not spaghetti dinner, it's a concert. So they're projected to raise about $2,500 for the band uniforms. Now, this was a need that she went out for, took some students, they spoke to the Rotary Club. So they have gone above and beyond. They've had the rib sale, they've asked for other donations. I mean, they're doing their part, but they're, they can only do so much, because there's only so much that can be given in Crescent City. Not to throw that or make it sound very negative or anything like that, but that's just reality. And with everything that we're trying to accomplish and trying to do and to bring that school up in the 21st century, it takes a lot, and it does take all of us to do the very best.
Shannon, will the, will the seventh graders, seventh and eighth graders that go to middle or intermediate, will that reduce the number of band members significantly, or will it not?
Oh, no, I'm headed down.
You're ahead of them?
We're, we're trying to keep that, that is a feeder program. I've talked with Ms. Thomas down there in hopes for next year, we could do something to maintain that program and build it. We don't know our allocations. We won't know them until later. But she and I have talked about a couple of things that we might, can work something out, because it's what's right and what's good for our kids in South Putnam. And we're gonna do what we need to do.
Whatever our decision, I hope you try to find a way to help them have a concession stand or a way to derive funding on their own, so they can work their own booths and things.
Well, we're gonna do everything that we can, even through Catfish, maybe possibly looking at doing some things there. My favorite, my, you know, where there's a will, there's a way. And if the kids need it, we're gonna do what we need to do to get it for them.
And I agree with superintendent, because I know, I mean, I have strong shoulders. So if everybody else says, well, you gave them money, but I have a lot of reasons to back that up. So I know we're gonna get flooded, and I agree with you 100%. But I want to get a deadline. If you need uniforms by, say, you need them by August, then I want to say, okay, you come back at the May meeting, and we've raised 6,200, we're 22. And then we could, I mean, I know we've done it for the dugout, and I didn't, I'm just telling you that it's, it's, it's very tight, and we don't have a lot of money to waste. But if we have some time, I've already spoken with the local restaurant about doing a spaghetti dinner with you guys, and I have a call back, because I did say, that's my commitment is, I really want to see you guys, because you are everywhere. You're not, you're representing our South District in an amazing way, in the parades, in this list of things you do, the racetrack, the parades, everything. So I don't want to say, golly, we just hands off, you are, you know, you're in uniform. But it's not like that, because I've seen where you've come. You had zero people six years ago. And I applaud these students, because it's a lot of hard work. So I feel like if the board could even say, hey, you guys make your effort, do what you can, and then come back. And I don't know what that deadline, I don't know how long this would take, when your goal to have these uniforms, if it's for, and say, we've done everything we can, we've raised 6,000.
When's the deadline?
Well, my heart would say May, or March, because I really wanted my seniors to be able to wear them by the time we left. But, you know, I don't know.
I know.
We are just, we're, I mean, we're head on, and whatever we can do by then.
I would say August, you have all your football games.
Right, that's when, August is when it would begin. So we actually need them in June, July, because the bibers are just generic. We have to have them all cut and sized and, because they're the very least expensive.
How long does it take to get them in, do you know? You hadn't ordered any in a while, so you may not know.
Right, I believe from, it's about six to eight weeks.
Okay.
And then we have to have them all hemmed out.
So if you needed them in, in July or August, so you'd have to order May?
I mean, by late May or early June, to have them in and be sure that we can get them hemmed out.
Well, I hate to put the superintendent in this position, because her, hers is a very global view of everything and how it impacts and what they feel like is fair and what's not fair. But we did have some financial problems with gate receipts and things at Crescent City High School. I would, and I understand fully why, I've said what she does. It's a very difficult thing to try to say to every group, here, take this, here, take this. But I, I think, you know, I don't know what you can raise between now and the, you wanted them in the middle of March or just first March?
Well, you know, that's, that's my dream, but I don't know if that's gonna be...
I just feel like if we had a good opportunity, a couple, like the spaghetti dinner and the thing I'm working on in Catfish. So let's say, if we say after, let's say the next, the second meeting in April, you came back and you said, this is what we've raised.
Now, Winn-Dixie is allowing us, we're gonna be marketing their new lemonade, so we're gonna have a lemonade stand at the Catfish. So that was something that he's allowed to do.
They do everything, yeah.
Yeah, so I feel like...
You know, come up, I mean, we, you can see. And that's just our performance. It has nothing to do with Congress and people that we get to. I mean, we're always busy with something.
Ms. Sanford does a great job. I've been, every time she's invited me to come to something in the park or wherever I've been down, and it's wonderful to hear the children play so well and to do well. And certainly, my job isn't to discourage you. My job is to say, I want to pay everything for everybody. The reality of, of our, our dollars and cents is that we can't do that. So you have to decide what you want to do, and anything is fine with me. And just, I hope Rhonda and Shannon tell us, you know, we've got money somewhere that we could do it with at that point.
No, well, I am personally. I'm gonna, I've already talked to the restaurant. But I felt like if we, and me and Ms. Sanford and Mr. Travis over here work together, and we do some things until the second meeting in April after the Catfish, then we could come back to the board and say, we've raised 6,000, now we're short.
And if Rotary, Rotary Club will let you do that, and they might have another project you can do as well, so...
My big point is you're working hard, so we have to support you. And I know it really, the finance department's gonna hate me for saying that, because it's like, ah, where's this coming?
Let me ask you this. I think now we're down to, you know, I know you're gonna raise some money. Can we front the money and let them pay us back half of it in some timeframe, like by the end of the year? Because there's no telling really, with some of the problems that you had with gate receipts in the last few years, what you might have been entitled to, to do at school, so...
What I'd like to see is, I'd like to see us buy the uniforms personally. And then, you know, just make it clear, we're not doing this for everybody. This is a unique situation. That's just my personal consent.
Cross those bridges when we get to them.
I know, they're not gonna, you know what? They're not gonna be mad. Mr. Erzary's not gonna be having a fit over this.
Well, I'm worried about our finance department, because if we...
I'm talking about the other high schools.
All right, y'all excuse me for a moment, but Ms. Georgerson has surrendered the gavel. And I'm chairman right now.
I really...
Oh, dear.
Want to hear from the, I just...
Yes, I do. I, I do want to make a motion. I found the statute that, I mean, I could be wrong, but this, this, it says, the revenues received under this session may be used by a county for any public purpose. So I'm gonna make a motion that we buy the Crescent City Band, High School Band, their uniforms.
Can we just look into it? If that's the case, and that's what you choose to do with money, then we'll see.
I just, I just don't want it on the audit, because...
We can't come up with eight grand otherwise without this?
Well, it's a...
Why don't we wait till May, February, April, and see what they get?
She needs it by March.
It's fine, I mean...
It's fine, I mean.
I just don't want an audit criticism, especially after Crescent City.
Well, wait a minute, we have a motion on the floor.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
A second for discussion.
Second for discussion, Mr. Wright.
I think it needs to be very clear to the public here and the general public, particularly our, our reporters who are here, go to write whatever in the paper, that myself and the board are all for supporting our students in any and everything they do in school and after school.
That's why it's so difficult.
The, the reality of it is you, your fiscal year is what it is. And you can only do what you can do in the constraints of your fiscal year. So, you know, you, in your own homes with your own children, you wanna give them everything you can possibly give them. But if the money isn't there, it isn't there. I think that it, it's very noble for us to wanna buy all the uniforms. And certainly, if we can do that, I'm all for it. The money that we get through the forestry department, we know every year we're gonna get some. And, and Rhonda has that set for a particular place because when we, when she does a budget and she lays it out for the year, she pretty much knows where everything's going. Just like in your own budget at home, you budget for the, you know, you gotta make your house payment, your car payment, groceries, et cetera.
And it is under discussion and input, Ms. Criswell, so we can vote anyway.
So, I would just say, if you want to pass this and say, "We're gonna pay for them, we're gonna pay for them."
We can't though. We can't because it's just discussion and input. And I just wanted to say that as a point of order, but I.
I'd have to ask Mr. Douglas on that. It's his new business, but it is on the agenda as discussion of new business.
Yeah, it is not a notice for approval.
Right, so.
So, the motion really is, is out of order.
It is out of order.
So, give me my camera back.
Take it back.
So, I remove, I remove my second.
And I remove my.
So, we.
I'd like to put it on the next agenda. To me, when, when, when is your fundraising? When will you have an idea?
We're, I've got one going right now if you want some strawberries.
All right, let's get it on the March 3rd agenda, please. For discussion input and approval.
Yes, yes.
And then we can vote.
I think I've been, you'll have a clear, you'll have a clear picture.
Madam Chair, I would simply, I would simply say, since there's gonna be some discussion and there's gonna be some research, that we don't narrow the discussion to approval of buying all the uniforms. Because they may raise some money, it might not cost us $8,000. So, I think however we place this on the agenda, it needs to give us latitude to respond to what's gonna happen between now and then.
Okay, how about discussion input and approval on subsidizing?
Yeah.
Something like that, subsidizing the high school bands.
I could, for personally, the reason I.
Because I think we would do for one.
Yeah, and I'm passionate because you guys are working hard. If you sent, came back and said, "We have zero money," then I'd say, "Sorry," because then I'm gonna have to turn away every other organization with nothing. But since you've worked hard, so that's my point is, we've done it before when you've raised your own. And I would feel if you came back with an amount, the 1,200 plus the things that you guys plan and hopefully I'll have that restaurant all figured out for that night and estimate and then we could.
Sounds good. In the meantime, we can talk to Rhonda.
And just as an aside, when students have to work hard for something, it means a lot more for them. I don't think we need to teach children that everything's free and all you have to do is ask, that anything worthwhile is worth working for. It develops in them leadership, character, and certainly a work ethic, which is good for them to learn when they're in school. Not that I expect you to go out and raise, you know, millions of dollars to take care of everything. I'm just saying, it doesn't hurt for students to have to work a little bit.
Right, and I think that's what they're doing. They're, they are working hard.
And, no, and you haven't. You've worked really hard. I just want, I just, I think you all need to understand that that's a good thing. I don't want them spending all their time working to raise money. But a little bit is, is good for your character. So, but beyond that, if we talk to our chief financial officer and see what we can do and you would have that figure in your mind for the next meeting and then you'd be prepared to move forward and help them. And certainly, let me just mention the, the receipt at the gate for Palaca High School, a much larger school, a much better established program. Certainly, they can do those kinds of things with the concessions and the gate. It's much harder at Interlaken and Crescent City where they're smaller. They may not have the tradition that Palaca High School does, so their gate is not as much. So, certainly, the football program has to support all the other athletics. So, it's kind of hard to split that gate and share that money when they are responsible for taking care of themselves and the other sports, which has been traditional in high schools for years and years and years everywhere, not just here in Putnam County. So, but I do wanna commend these two young men for their hard work and their leadership. And it's gonna serve them well everywhere they go in life. I'm really proud of them, but certainly, they deserve a little help for their efforts and that's certainly what we wanna do for them.
And our band is.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sanford.
Thank you.
We're gonna, we're gonna get with you. I might be serving spaghetti.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make them.
What about a donation, Mr. Buckles? My personal donation would help.
Break out that checkbook.
Yeah.
I'll get mine out if you get yours.
I'll give my two minutes.
Right.
Checkbook.
Okay.
Okay, moving right along. Sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay. First of all, I'd like to make something really clear. Not once have I ever bashed just whoever said that was a blatant liar. In three and a half years, I have raised 196,231 dollars for the Crescent City High School, Little Egan knows, on my own nickel. I've never come to you guys and asked you for one red cent. Most of you don't know who I am, but there's 180,000 people who do, okay? I'm the one that got with the Rotary Club and the different clubs, Moose Lodge, the Eagles Clubs and all these and spent the time getting these benefits set up. I've also got some things in the works, like I've got a raffle. I've got a guitar center down here, the music center that's donating two brand new guitars to raffle off. Beef O' Brady's, Three Bananas, all these restaurants that give me stuff to have a big raffle. I have a bunch of stuff in works, okay? I'm not asking anybody for nothing. You can ask the kids that are sitting here. The first thing I told them when I went into the talk with the band is that you're not gonna get anything for free. If you want something, when I'm standing out there, and it's a shame that not one stinking parent showed up to stand out there. That's why my voices are asked from, and I got pneumonia a few months ago from cooking ribs and getting the oil and stuff in my lungs. Had to go to the hospital, get my lungs pumped out. About the same condition right now, two 16-hour days. But the kids stood out there with me. Not one parent showed up. That's the one problem we have in this county is their parent involvement stinks. And I've been bashed because of what I do. I don't get paid one red cent for helping any of these kids. I got thrown off a field the other night for taking pictures, you know? And, and I take abuse and stuff like this. I was in a children's home, my mom was murdered when I was a kid. I was one of those kids sitting right there that had nothing. But because an elderly couple helped me out, sent me to private school, I've got a good education, I give back because that's what I had done for me. I'm not up here to bash you guys. I don't care about your building. I don't care about how well you guys dress. I'm in a tee shirt and jeans and I need new tennis shoes. But yet, I gave $3,000 last night to, or the last year to the sporting programs over here. You know, I'm not in this for me. And I know you guys are not in it for you. But these kids do need help. When I look back and see the things, you had mentioned it's football and basketball. This is a co-curricular activity, it's not extracurricular. The equipment that I've seen at the high school, and I have pictures, I did not put those in the paper. I could raise such a stinking uproar in this community, they would be up here packing this place. I don't do that. If you read my article, and I passed an article last time I was here, I said, "It's not the school board's problem, it's not the president's problem, it's not the governor's problems. It's our problem as a community to make sure that our kids have what they need." If everybody in this county would give 25 cents, 70, almost 80,000 residents here, we wouldn't have a problem at Interlaken, Palaca, or Crescent City. And Crescent City is just about like Interlaken. There's no funds there. We're the fifth poorest state for five years running, or county, for five years running. I told all those kids, if they wanted something, they have to get out there and help me with it. If they do, the kids that show up will get rewarded for it, going to Disney. I will pay for it out of my own pocket. The kids that don't will not go. But yet, almost everyone except for the two that went to Alabama showed up. And not one kid. And I, when I got to checking into it, isn't the equipment at the high school, the band stuff, isn't that owned by the county? The drones, the clarinets and that stuff? Shouldn't that be under some?
If we purchase it, it is.
Well, that, that equipment was purchased, and also in 1952, when the place was burned down over there, some of the equipment came from, I believe it's called South Putnam High School, which is now Palaca High. Or Palaca South. Some of that equipment over there, it still has the stamp on it. I don't remember what it was, what was it? Some of that stuff still has, that's how old that equipment is. But that was purchased by the city or by the county. And when I'm looking at it, shouldn't it be under some type of maintenance program? I mean, it is classroom stuff, just like the chairs, you know, bleachers, anything else. That's, to me, that should have been, funds should be appropriated out of maintenance to help out with that stuff.
Travis, it's, school principals are assigned to manage their schools. And you've got a dynamic principal right now that's trying to bring everything up to standard. And this is something she hasn't been able to bring up yet. And I, I think what you've done here today and what the group has done is really raised some awareness. And I think you're gonna see things steadily improve. And it won't, doesn't always happen fast enough, but I can remember, I can remember building the band suite down there when there wasn't a band to mount anything, so.
I know she's, Ms. Higginbottom is doing a good, I always say her name wrong. But she's, she's, I think she's doing a good job for what she has to fight with. I mean, you know, there's little funds, the building was, I mean, you face it, all of our schools are not what they should be, any place in the United States. But I think she's done a good job on it.
You can bet there'll be a lot of dialogue between she and the superintendent about this matter and I think it'll be rectified.
And mine is not to point fingers. I think it's, it's not the principal's fault, it's not the band director, it's not, it's all of our faults that this thing isn't right. It's not the city or the county. And I'm not bashing anybody. All I'm saying is, if there's a problem, we all need to fix it. Whether it comes from you guys or me, I'm doing my part. But I don't see too many people out there helping me, you know? And, and that's the main problem. I can't save all those kids for what they need and by myself. But yet, I went and spent four grand building my own smoker so that I can take it up to Winn-Dixie. I've got another benefit coming up for them, uh, the first week of March. You know, if we can get the community over here involved, that's all I'm asking. If I can, if you guys can set up something where maybe you could match some funds or put it in a paper to get donations. You know, I have a pretty good-sized audience, but you got Palaca daily and you guys sitting here, that could put it in a paper too. And make it a community effort instead of it just being a few people here or one or two there. That's about all I have to say.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Appreciate all your help. Thank you so much.
Okay, now we'll move along under new business. Ms. Nikki Hawthorne, Director of our school, school food service, to discuss with the board plans for Putnam's food service program to be under the community eligibility provision, which is district-wide free lunch, beginning in the 2015-16 school year. And I believe that's district-wide free lunch and breakfast for all students. Is that right, Ms.?
That's correct. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and School Board. And, yeah, so the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of 2010 did have a provision in it, what we called CEP, Community Eligibility Provision. This was published in the Federal Register, November 4th, 2013. This provision allows certain school districts that do qualify to serve free lunch and breakfast to all students. One of the many benefits is the reduced paperwork for households and school food service because no household applications are collected and processed. This also reduces the chance of overt identification and stigma. It is on the agenda today for discussion to allow any questions that may be raised that you might have. And we are also just in the planning stages involving all other departments in the district that can be impacted by this decision. We've had several meetings to talk about this. There's 26 school districts currently in the state of Florida that are on the CEP or partial CEP. Alachua County, I've been talking with very closely. I think they have 24 schools currently on the CEP. This was available this current school year. So, we're learning from the other districts who are currently operating this program and under the CEP provision. That's really all I have.
All right, is, is this funded federal money, state monies?
Correct, it's federal, federal program. Yes, sir.
Do we know about what that dollar amount is?
The federal reimbursement is the exact same. It's the way we, the way it's calculated is we look at our, what we call our DC students. So, any students in our county that get any type of state benefit or federal benefit, we match it up with our student list of who's enrolled in our county and that's who we determine our DC kids. There's a spreadsheet I'd be happy to share with you, to show you kinda how we determine how we qualify and who have the ranking of the current schools that we have.
But now, my understanding is this would be for all students, so.
Correct. Regardless of household income, yes, that's correct. It would eliminate free and reduced lunch applications as we've noted in the past.
We make more money than the federal government than we do if we pay for it out of pocket.
Right, I, I'm with you. I think it's a great idea, but here's just my concern in, in forward planning. And we're what-if-ing here, but whenever you deal with the government, as you know, you sort of have to what-if.
Absolutely.
Right, so, so what if we go this route and then there's a reduction in the federal funding, which can happen?
Right.
How, how do we, do we go back to the old system of qualifying students and?
Right, so, there's a multiplier that the state issues out. And right now, it's 1.6, it can go down to 1.3. And we have the ability to lock in the 1.6 multiplier for four years. So, if that rate reduces after the four-year period, we have the option to opt out. You can also opt out of the program at any point.
But if the federal government cuts the program, is, is, is my point.
They've never actually gone down in their reimbursement. The reimbursement rate always goes up five to six cents every year.
So, so your, your opinion then is if, if we choose to go this route, that it, it's forever, that they're not going to down the road say?
Not with the history of the program, as long as it's been in existence.
Okay, all right. Had to ask because we gotta think dollars down the road, right, so.
Madam Chair, I had a quick question because I talked to Nikki, this was two years ago. And I went to a workshop at FSBA and I came back, it's like, oh, my gosh, can we do this? And so, she, it, I think it was still 40% of the, of the community, the district has to be on food stamps. Is that still the same?
DC students.
And then the other thing that I was concerned about, because when you did look into it, you said, "We're gonna have, lose some money because we're not getting reimbursed with the actual cost." You still think we would, I think it was like 150?
Yeah, it would definitely a financial interest for us to do this. We had some, some of our files were not accurate. So, when we were doing our imports and our exports and the state came out with a new way of how we match up our kids. And so, we had issues along the way. So, all those kinks have been worked out to where our numbers are where they need to be and exceeded.
Oh, great, so we won't lose any money by doing this?
Absolutely not. Yeah, Alachua has found that their participation with their lunch program has increased around 11% because of this program. So, we actually anticipate to go, do better.
So, basically, for everybody to have free lunch and then you would still have your à la carte items so that the kids that buy that, you would still have cash items.
Absolutely.
But just the main lunch is they get to pick two entrees or whatever, something like that.
Right.
So, the teachers can still purchase their lunches.
Absolutely, yeah.
What's our, what's our free and reduced rate? Now, what's our percentage of students?
Eighty.
Eighty, it is 80?
It changes daily depending on enrollment.
Roughly.
We're not gonna have that, we won't have those figures anymore, correct?
Correct. Yeah, and those are some of the things that we're working with, the other departments, that actually, you know, when, with grant writing and things like that, that's kind of the number, that's the magic numbers that a lot of folks need. So, yeah, the USDA has memos on those different, like Title I and E-rate. They have guidance on how school districts that turn CEP or go with this provision of how that's handled. So, that's why we're in discussion mode right now for next school year to see how this will impact the other departments.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Well, it sounds wonderful. Thank you very much. It's exciting.
A lot of people excited about that.
So, that means starting in August, all our students get lunch and?
Breakfast.
Breakfast. And we don't have to process tons of paperwork, which is a good thing. Okay, next, on new business discussion. Discussion input and approval of request by graduates of the former Melrose High School, currently Melrose Elementary School, to place a commemorative historical marker on school grounds.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that we grant permission to the graduates of Melrose High School to place commemorative historical marker on school grounds.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
I second it for discussion.
Well, we're gonna give them a, a chance to present, I'm sure.
Well, just we go ahead and get the motion out of the way.
That's right.
They don't block subpoenas.
That part is over, so.
Okay, I'm Doris Ford Whiteener. And I graduated in 1962, so. I'm one of the later ones, but Melrose High School was started in 1925 and it was in existence until 1968. And then it moved to Interlaken. So, we would like to put up an historical marker for 1925 through 1968 on Melrose Elementary, which is now. on Melrose Elementary, which is now, that's what it is now, it was a high school, on the grounds at the corner of 26 and 21. Now, there is a marquee there at the moment and we might have to move it a little one way or the other, but we do want to put it on school property. So, that's why we're asking your permission to do so.
The, the only reason I said discussion was since you were up here, which I think is a wonderful idea, I just didn't want it to in any way block the, the, the marker that the school uses to commemorate, you know, give messages to parents.
Right. I agree with that. And we might have to set it back a little. But we would like to be able to see it from both 26 and 21.
Scott, is there any, any set aside rules with the county that would prohibit those signs from being too close together? It wouldn't matter how far it was from a marquee, okay.
May I ask what the text is on the marquee itself?
We haven't determined that yet. We're starting with getting your approval first.
I think it should say Edgar and Floyd Johnson attended high school here. Yes.
She graduated from there and all.
The picture they've got is like the Fort Shannon marker, the historical marker.
Yeah, I, I saw the picture. I, I don't think there would be a problem with the, the shape of the sign.
Yes.
Uh, but I, I just would caution the board that if you approve it, that you condition your approval on knowing what the text is going to be in case there are any problems constitutionally that we want to address.
We have to go through the state to get approval, okay, for an historical marker. And the gymnasium itself, the lumber that built that was from the original school, which was, had burnt down most of it, but that lumber was saved to build the gymnasium.
It's a very cool gym, by the way.
Yeah, it is.
It is an awesome gym.
Yes.
It's great. Well, I, so.
I agree with that.
Could we make the motion?
Can you alter your motion, Mr. Wright, to include the fact that we will?
Let me with, well, I will, let me, I withdraw my motion, Madam Chair, and I make a second motion that we approve the placement by Melrose High School alumni, commemorative historical marker, conditional upon approval of the text that it meets legal code.
I second it again.
Okay, we have a motion and second on the floor. Is there any more discussion?
Not unless they want to say some more.
I'm sorry, she was talking in my ear. What was your?
We did the motion that we, we, I made the same motion except with the phrase that it meets legal code.
Without Edgar and, and. Mildred Warley though, that would be.
Yeah, we could have Mildred on there.
Yes. No, no more discussion for myself. We'll agree with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Call the question then. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, say no. Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, and may I have a statement to that effect, please? We have our high school reunion on the 21st of March and I would like to have that to present to our alumni.
Perhaps we could just print out minutes and send them.
That would work. That would work.
Thank you for all your work doing that. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I come play basketball in your gym?
Moving right along, Mr. Michael A. Oglesby. Discussion input and request to sell district property. Come on up, Mr. Oglesby.
Madam Chair, Superintendent, members of the board, I am Michael A. Oglesby. I, I, unfortunately, I am one of the, the members of the institutions that, that has been removed from school board property as far as having provided several years of security at the ag farm. And I, I submitted a letter through your attorney explaining to, to the board that I've, I've attempted to find other property. There's none in Putnam County that's suitable, most of which that I've found is underwater. I've made every attempt I can to try to move the trailer from the location. And this particular piece of property, Egress, is right off of Cricket Avenue. There's, there's, there's no interference with any type of, of a school activity per se. My request is, is possibly your consideration in selling just that immediate area that, that my particular residence encompasses. I've been, I've sat here the entire meeting and, and listened to our budget woes. I'm willing to pay fair market price and, and all, and all costs involved in the transition of this, what I believe to be, in my rough estimate, which was done by a professional, but not necessarily a, a surveyor, to be about .8 acres. So, it wouldn't even be a full acre of property.
I don't, I'd have to talk with Scott because the comprehensive plan probably wouldn't allow that to occur, would it?
Well, I, wouldn't you have to declare that piece, that section of property as?
Have to declare it surplus.
Surplus in order to sell it in the first place. And it's very unusual to.
The ag people would be upset.
Well, yeah, that is the ag farm. I, I'm, I don't know that, do you remember exactly when, what we did for properties at one time, and that's been a long time ago, that we, we said that our resource officers or police officers could live on our property and place some kind of a mobile home there for as long as, you know, I, I don't know, I'd have to defer to the attorney about what the contract originally said, but I don't think we've ever said that they would be there forever. And we don't, we haven't had in those particular mobile homes, actual resource officers or law enforcement officers in quite some time. And it's a liability to the board if you have mobile homes with somebody else in them on that property and they're not serving the purpose that they were supposed to serve. And I think it's been quite some time actually since you've lived on the property or provided security.
Actually, ma'am, not to be argumentative, I, I had an officer who was renting that piece of property or that, that actual trailer from me and when the board elected to remove that office or have me remove the, the, the property, I've since lost that, that rental. I mean, no one's gonna stay there. I, I, I let him out of the lease. The lease was being actually handled through one of the local.
But.
So, so, no, I was, I was, I was in compliance.
Yeah, and haven't we paid, I think the board paid a hundred a month to?
He hasn't lived there probably in the last three months.
But you, you have been receiving a hundred a month from the district, haven't you?
No, ma'am.
They stopped.
No, ma'am.
No, we stopped when we sent the letters out.
Okay, but it only stopped when we sent the letter and when was that, recently?
Uh, yeah, and I, well, yeah, for my, for my, for my rent.
Did we pay the utilities also on the property, everybody's property?
No, ma'am. I, I have my electric bill.
I'm very empathetic, because I think the world of Mike and, but I, I don't know that you could even declare .8 of an acre surplus and it meet the comprehensive plan in that area to sell. It might have to be an acre or more, I don't know.
Well, whatever, whatever the board decides, I mean, if there's 36-point something acres out there, if they wish to sell me all of it, I'd be happy to purchase it.
When I was school superintendent, I had realtors approach us. We talked about building bus compounds, maintenance, things like that, even a school and the ag folks would always rise up and want to hold on to their ag farm. So, I think it would be imperative to really know how the Palacahai folks feel about their ag farm and what their plans are in regards to that.
In speaking to George DeLoach, I'm not so sure what his affiliation is. Last I knew he was president.
Just a volunteer. He doesn't have any authority to speak about that property.
Very well, then, I know, I know.
As good a guy as he is and as much time as he puts in, he's, he's an audit employee.
Exactly. I know his concern is the safety and well-being of the property and having somebody there and that was one of his concerns when the board made the decision that they did. And that's originally why nearly 40-something years ago, from my understanding and speaking to George, that was the first piece of property that a law enforcement officer or school board employee was allowed to set a mobile home. And that was one of the reasons, you know, obviously, whenever I made my decision to, to go into that agreement with the school board, that the longevity of it, I'm like, oh, certainly, they would never remove this, but obviously, there, there was reasons the boards had. And I am where I am now. I'm, I, and I've made reasonable effort to try to find property to move that residence to. If nothing else, I believe the 26th of this month, that's supposed to be off the property, I'm going to have need in an extension because I don't know if anybody else who has a a mobile home on the property has been able to remove theirs either. I'm not sure. I haven't traveled around the county. As you know, I, I now reside outside the county. So, so I, I don't know if, if they've had the opportunity to or if they've approached the board for an extension either. My, my thing was a solution, from my understanding, the board was concerned about liability and people on the property. I've always maintained a, an insurance policy on my, on that piece of property. It, it, it's actually still under, it still has an insurance policy on it. I, I still pay a bank monthly to, to have the opportunity not to live in it at this point or have anybody there. It's, it's kind of in.
I just, common sense tells you, if you, if you, never mind, y'all go ahead. I'm just, I'm really concerned that I was not in an administrative position at the time that the board chose to do this. And it seemed like a good idea at the time, but it's still with school board property and I think that the officers were told, for lack of a better place to live, if they had a single wide, most of these, most of the trailer, I don't know of anybody's, but yours, it was double wide. Most of them were single wide and they placed them there, knowing that they could place it there for free and live there until such time as the board decided that wasn't gonna be a practice anymore. I don't think we ever entered into it saying we were gonna do this forever. I don't think that was the board's intent, nor do I think that was in the contract. And, and it, it was a temporary kind of a situation. You need a place to live temporarily. We have a place you can put, you know, your mobile home temporarily. And I don't think we ever thought it would get to a point like this, because it, it's something that, it's not beneficial to us anymore. And as a board, they have a right to make that decision about their property. I'm sorry that you purchased something that's that large and that expensive and have put money into it over the years.
I just wanted to represent.
It's kind of like renting an apartment and saying, well, I didn't think they'd ever raise my rent. I mean, you know, that happens almost on a yearly basis.
I, I, I believe I did my homework in that, in that there was a property, when I first moved on there, you're absolutely right. There was a double wide that was built probably in the 1950s that was placed on there. It was an eyesore to the community. This was back in 1996 and it was an eyesore to the community, truly was leaning to one side. And yes, I, I elected to, to go ahead and make the investment to, to actually improve the neighborhood. And, and by doing so, 18 years later, and, and, and I agree, it's a contract we entered into. I didn't think it would ever, it would ever change, just in the fact that we were, you know, I was going by the, by the original contract. I did not breach the contract.
At the time, you were a resource officer. You have not been a resource officer for Putnam County Schools in quite some time.
No, ma'am, I was a deputy sheriff whenever I first moved on there. That's all I was, was, was a mere slick-sleeved deputy sheriff. I was later promoted to sergeant and then at one point, yes, I was a school resource officer. But no, I, you know, I've, I've been, you know, just with law enforcement, but recently retired and have actually vacated Putnam County.
Mr. Roach, did you have something you'd like to say, please?
Yes, ma'am. Um, in regards to one of the, Mr. Oglesby requests to have an extension, we have granted an extension to the person who's living in the mobile home at Platte High School. We gave him till June 30th to the end of this fiscal year in an effort to work with him. Anyway, I would see no, as now that I'm in a different position, I would see no issue with granting Mr. Oglesby till June 30th in the essence, or interest of being fair to everybody. I have discussed that with the superintendent, but we've already made that a possibility with, with another prayer.
I think we also have one at the James A. Long property that we've been working with to have removed and. So, but, but I'm thinking of the places we still have them to be removed. We only have three locations, I believe, at this time.
Mr. Douglas, did you have something to say?
I just was gonna add that if the, if it's the board's decision to grant an extension, I think it would be wise to condition that extension upon the proof of insurance that Mr. Oglesby has already alluded to, that that exists, because as the superintendent has stated, it is a liability. If, if they're, if the folks who are there are not supposed to be there and were operating under these extensions of when they were supposed to be off, it does create a liability. Somebody is on the property, if a renter comes on, they have a party, someone gets hurt. We could be facing a lawsuit that we can avoid hopefully by having sufficient insurance and making sure that the, the district isn't named insured on that policy that pertains to the property. If the, if the board wants to sell the property, I'm not sure that the board has enough information at this point in time to make that decision, because we would ask Scott to analyze the surplus and, and see if that's something that the, the board could undertake.
You'd have to, you'd have to totally change the zoning from ag to, to.
Residential.
And, and from my understanding from Mr. Oglesby, Mr. Oglesby was willing to pay for a survey, the closing cost, rezoning or whatever else would be required.
Basically, you know, what it boils down to is, is I played by the rules. I've always tried to play by the rules. And I know I'm down to the nth hour. I've made, I've made, I've had three different realtors from various organizations within Putnam County, searching out suitable property for me so that I could move this trailer, which is a very expensive undertaking, which, you know, it, it, it is what it is, okay? I entered into a contract with y'all 18 years ago. The, the board's elected that, that, you know, they're gonna need those services on that property. I knew that going into it, okay? I'm not, I'm, I'm not gonna sit here and argue that. What I'm looking for is a viable solution to my problem. And I realize it is my problem, okay? But I am trying to rectify the problem. One, the least expensive way I possibly can, okay? And, and, and two, in a, in a viable way that still would basically supply eyes and ears for the school district adjacent to their property, because that is, and I, I wrote it in my original letter, it, it's a very suburban area. There, there, there's not much, what I would refer to as a law enforcement officer, has natural surveillance. There's not a lot of cars up and down that road. There's a, there's, there's now a paved road on the other side, Slaughter Road is a, is a paved road. There's not a lot of eyes and ears out there. You've got very expensive equipment. You've got tractors out there. You've got kids. One, one bull, from my understanding, could be valued up to $10,000. And, and, you know, there, there, there's nobody out there even keeping an eye on that. We don't know. But again, I'm just in a situation, I'm coming to the board saying, listen, I've tried. I've made every effort.
Mr. Oglesby, we do have to limit time, but I would like to know what the board's pressure is on this, what, what comments, considerations, what, what you'd like to see happen?
I'd like to see what it would be valued at if it could be sold and if the ag department so felt the need and would it diminish the value of our current property that we hold there in case a future board chose to sell it as a residential community or something like that. You know, you never know, or build an elementary school. It's a very nice piece of property.
Is that something you can handle, Scott? Okay. Mr. Wright?
No, no, I, yeah, I agree. I'd like to see what the feasibility is of it and does it negatively impact the board's plan? Long term, so we just have to look at that and see, so.
Thank you. Just, thank, I appreciate your opportunity, just to look into it.
Okay, so why don't we ask for a report at our next meeting from, from Scott, if that's possible, about this? And then we will decide where we're going from there. It's possible we give you an extension to the end of our fiscal year, whatever.
I'll do the best I can.
But for right now, so will we. We'll do the best we can to. Can we have it on the agenda again for the next meeting, please? Under old business. An approval, put the, the approval word on there too, so if we need to, we can take action.
And you, you, just one more moment, my son, I would like to have just a few seconds.
Okay. One, two, three, that's it.
I know that the top 50 scholars, Ms. Chris, we all spoke about.
Tell us who you are.
I'm Tanner Oglesby. I'm his son. I grew up in that house, never lived in any house until we had to be moved out the property. They moved to Alabama. A lot of memories there. I'd really like to stay in that house and pretty much raise my family in that house. in that house and pretty much, um, raise my family in that house. Um. She spoke of keeping people that are from Putnam County in Putnam County, because there's really no, not a whole lot here. And I'm planning to be a physical therapist, gonna be a doctor. I know there's a lot of people here that need that. My fiancee, she's gonna be a nurse. I know that that's really needed in this community. And I'd like to stay here. And that's the house that I'd like to be in. So, just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tanner.
We'll see you next month.
I, I know you, Tanner, but everybody else doesn't.
I do. I was toyin' with all the football games when I was little.
Okay, moving along. Discussion input and approval of community water fluoridation resolution. I, uh, received a communication from Dr. Jump.
Yes.
And at the city commission meeting, we are going to present this, assuming the board approves resolution, whereas dental caries is a prevalent health problem in Putnam County and impacts the education of our students. And whereas extensive scientific evidence over the past half-century has established and consistently reaffirmed that fluoridation of community water supplies is the safest and the most cost-effective community-based method of preventing dental caries, regardless of socioeconomic status. And whereas certain groups, example those of lower socioeconomic status and underserved groups, are disproportionately affected by dental diseases while having less access to clinical prevention and treatment services. And whereas the entire dentate population, including adults and older adults, receives substantial oral health benefits from fluoridation. And whereas dental caries experience has increased in communities in which fluoridation was discontinued. And whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention in nineteen ninety-nine recognized water fluoridation as one of the ten great public health achievements of the twentieth century. And whereas extensive scientific evidence supports the continued desirability of introducing and/or maintaining fluoridation in community water supplies. And therefore, the school board of Putnam County strongly supports community water fluoridation done and enacted this seventeenth day of February. I need a motion and a second to approve this, please.
Madam Chair, I second.
I think, I think we all know how important this is, and, um, the more voices that are heard, I think the better. So, we have a motion and a second.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just, I just wanna state that, um, when Dr. Jump gets involved in something, again, I'm not just saying this because he's my kid's doctor. I'm just telling you, when he gets involved, it is thoroughly researched, it is thoroughly evaluated, and it is a, it is a decision and a conclusion you can, you can count on. And so, I hope our county commissioners, I hope the city, I hope everyone involved, will, will take this recommendation as seriously as we do. So, I'm wholeheartedly for it.
Very good. Anybody else? There's a motion and second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Caries five zero. We are out of new business and into reports. Reports by board member, Ms. Jean.
I've been busy since our last board meeting. I spent, um, from Wednesday to Friday at school board member training in Ocala. The first day was on, uh, personnel issues and collective bargaining, and I learned more than I ever thought I would about those two topics. And then the second two days was on school finance. And one of the things they told us over and over to do was to hug our chief financial officer. So, if Rhonda were here, I would hug her, and I'm gonna hunt her down and hug her, because it is unbelievable what she and the rest of that office have to do. I mean, and, you know, and I don't do numbers, so it was just way over my head, but it's amazing. And I was so grateful to have the opportunity to have that training.
Um, I also was able to go to training, something a little different. It's Studer Group, which is, um, it's all about evidence-based leadership. And I just came back learning a lot about why we do what we do and why Ms. Chriswell is constantly pulling her hair out over the database, the, I mean, the data and the reason. It's just, it's, it's, uh, it's more than one person can really wrap their brain around, but I appreciate our leadership, because it, a lot of the things, which I plan to, you know, get more specific, but we're already doing, and I do appreciate that. But evidence-based leadership is everywhere. That's what healthcare does, that's what, you know, education, that's the, that's the basis for a good, um, organization. And we're really working hard at that, and I see that more and more in education, especially here. So, um, it's, it's just, it's massive. So, I appreciate trying to take those roles on and trying to learn a new way to calculate every decision you make, evidence-based, evidence-based. Where's the evidence for this decision? And as a board, I feel like we're doing that more and more. We, we discussed our strategic plan and, and a lot of, you know, specifics. And we see these things, and that shows that, you know what, as a board, we are using evidence-based decision-making, and I appreciate that. And we're not just trying to, um, do things without thinking about all the consequences on both sides, so. Thank you.
Mr. Buckles?
Uh, the only thing I'd like to mention is how proud I am of the, the Crescent City High students and, and teacher that came in and support they're getting from their principal. You, you gotta start somewhere to go, to go to the top. And I know they're rapidly doing that. And she hasn't been able to cover every dynamic and problem that they've got, but I, I think Ms. Chriswell was very well spoken in that our children do need to learn that they can be a part of this, and they can, you know, I hearken back to my days in school and all the stuff we had to do from varsity club to selling stuff. And, and you did, you appreciated it more, you really did. And we can do some big things once in a while, but the small things, there needs to be some work ethic tied to it. And all we, all they need is a little help. And I think we're gonna be able to work something out. So, Michelle, let them know how proud everybody is of them, because it is about the kids. All this stuff is really about the young people, so.
Okay, Mr. Ray?
Yeah. A couple of things. Uh, one, uh, my, I think it's my first or second year on the board, um, that Powell came to us, um, Barry and that group, the boxing, uh, crowd. I just wanna let you know, they're still out there doing great things. Um, they have now, of course, started primarily down in Crescent City, but they've moved now up to Palacka. I met with Barry last week, and we're partnering with them, uh, with our church, uh, to provide some facilities. And they're gonna provide some equipment, and we're gonna forge a partnership to continue to help students, um, in, in Palacka area, uh, get involved in that excellent program. So, I wanna thank the board. Um, I think, Nikki, you were on the board when we approved Powell, right?
Yeah.
And you were too, right. Um, so it's just good to know that decisions we made back then are still paying off today. That's always, always good to know. Um, second, I went to the Jenkins Play. Uh, Jenkins put on a play, and, um, I gotta tell you, Coach Trevette and Ms. Larry, uh, did a great sunny and share. So, if you, if you see, if you see Coach Trevette or Ms. Larry, uh, out there running around, get them to do sunny and share for you. It was, it was great. Um, uh, Ms. Guy and Ms. Wells led that, and they did a phenomenal job. Just wanna let them know what a great job they did. Uh, they work hard and invest in our students there. And then finally, um, superintendent and I were asked to attend a meeting today with, um, Mr. Browning and Ken Hinton, who's a vice, my vice president in MOA, Military Officer Association of America. I'm president of that this year, and, um, the sheriff. And I guess that was it, wasn't it, fellas? Yes, and Jim Roach was there. Mr. Roach was there. On, um, next Friday, on the twenty-seventh, um, we're gonna be having a, uh, a going-away send-off for, um, our local National Guard unit. Our National Guard unit is being deployed, uh, to Afghanistan and will be gone for a year. Um, and, uh, John, uh, spearheaded this thing and wanted, uh, the district to be involved. I wanna personally thank the superintendent for, um, taking on this, the twenty-seventh, this next, next Friday.
Friday, the twenty-seventh.
Friday, the twenty-seventh, right. Friday, the twenty-seventh.
Twelve thirty.
Twelve thirty. It's gonna be at the amphitheater.
We'll have to write it down for you.
We will.
There'll be a lot of information you'll get in the paper. It's gonna be coming out. Um, but, um, this is what's great about being a part of our community, is, is when our, uh, community is doing something like this, and people in our community are being asked to serve at a higher level, we wanna be supportive. And so, I'm thankful that, um, superintendent's going to be supportive. Board, I wanna invite y'all to come out on the twenty-seventh to say goodbye, and God bless you to our troops that will be going, uh, truly into harm's way, um, this time. And so, um, we wanna do the right thing there. And so, um, again, superintendent, thank you for stepping up. I'm honored to be, asked to be involved. So, um, more to follow.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Buckles forgot to say something.
I'd like to mention just what Terry was talking about. Uh, we've been, I've been backing too with Ms. Chriswell about this National Guard thing for a while, and that, that is very important for them. I had asked Mr. Douglas to look into a variety of topics some time ago, and one of them was on, uh, local preference, which we haven't gotten to that one yet, and what, versus our policy versus, uh, statute. And I'm sure you will be getting that when you can. Uh, and then I also asked for our, our responsibility as a board in trespass. And I know, as an administrator, we have to allow our administrators to, to trespass people who they feel like are creating a disruption to the instructional program of the school. And that's why we have them there. My concern is that I wanna make sure that we know what our legal responsibility is and, and that we don't do something that's going to bar the superintendent or a principal from doing, fulfilling their role of keeping things safe and, and, uh, and away from a clear and present danger. Or are we, are we, do we have a different latitude? Are we the ultimate say, uh, Mr. Douglas, when it comes to the trespass of an individual?
Yes, sir. We, we did research on that, and, um, it is my opinion that, um, the trespass in a, in a public forum, uh, like this, um, should only be used in, in the most compelling circumstances. Uh, and the constitution requires us, um, to keep open these, uh, public meetings, um, unless there is, um, compelling reasons, uh, to the contrary. And if we do decide to trespass somebody, then we must still provide, um, alternative means of communication for those individuals to still participate, even if it's not here in this, uh, particular, uh, space. Um, so, I, I did research, um, as you had requested, and, um, it's, the, the board's decision, um, but I, my strong belief is that, um, you know, as to particular individuals, it should be hit on a case-by-case basis, uh, but there ought to be, um, compelling reasons to forbid someone to participate in this public forum.
If the superintendent or, and it, or the, uh, or law enforcement officer were to deem it necessary to trespass someone, then the, the superintendent or the board could apply certain parameters for an alternative attendance, like just meet them at the door and come in with them, or, I mean, certain caveats. Would that be permissible, or is that a violation?
That, that would be permissible.
Okay.
Certain caveats, yes. Depending on each particular individual case.
Okay, when I'm hearing you say, Mr. Douglas, and I, most of us know who we're talking about, there's a trespass out. Somebody can't come to our meetings. But what I heard you say is that-
No, no, he can come to meetings.
Excuse me?
He can come to the meetings.
Yes. We never trespass, we never trespass him or anyone from the meetings, only from the building.
But the, the issue is that-
How does he come to a meeting if it's in the building?
That, that, therein lies the, the issue.
Um, if you would remember that Mr. Paget, who was previously our attorney, did a letter to the board. Uh, I didn't bring my copy with me. It's on my desk. However, that was stated in his letter, that anybody can come to our public meetings at any time. And, and RJ Larissa, who is our state attorney, met with myself and Mr. Paget, and we had that discussion. And I understood that from the beginning. My intent was never to keep anybody from attending board meetings. And I, I had a specific conversation with Mr. Larissa, who stated to me that, that any person could come, and I understood that. Never said I didn't want anybody to come to our board meetings, but they would be expected to conduct themselves in the proper, uh, behavior as would be warranted by a public meeting. And I was also told, uh, by Mr. Larissa that, um, that person could not be treated any differently than any other person. They come in the building, they go to the meeting, they come out, and they leave the building, which is my desire. But they could not be escorted or treated in any manner differently from any other member of the public. And all of that was conveyed to the current situation by a phone call of RJ Larissa himself. So, there was never, at any time, any attempt to keep anyone from board meetings. And I wanna make that perfectly clear. I never attempted to do that, not now or in the past.
This letter here says, though, that he is restricted. He can only appear ten minutes before the meeting. Now, fifteen, not twenty. Ten minutes before the meeting. He has to submit to a reasonable search, security precautions. He was told to search if necessary. Assuming there are no security problems, he'll be allowed to enter and participate in the meetings. But immediately upon conclusion of the meeting, he will be directed by security to leave the meeting immediately without journey to other areas or departments. I don't-
Uh, that, that's not the letter that I have, and-
Well, this is from Mr. Larissa, and what, I'm sorry, to Mr. Larissa from Jim Paget.
Give it to Charlie or Ms. Chriswell.
Charlie, my question is, could this be done without board approval, you know, a trespass? Cause we, I didn't even have knowledge of it. To be honest with you, I, I found out about it long after the fact, so.
Well, the, the, the district administration, uh, in, in, um, executing, um, decisions to have an orderly flow of business, um, can make decisions on, um, trespass and, um, the security of staff offices and, and those types of, um, day-in, day-out type of, um, considerations that come up. Um, but when we are considering board meetings, um, too, and, and also, um, as your, um, duty as to, um, set policy and to guide, uh, administration in, uh, certain, um, execution of those decisions, uh, I, I think it is helpful, uh, for, for the board to, um, offer guidance as to what, uh, uh, levels of, um, conduct are appropriate and not, uh, what, um, what types of, um, behavior, um, will be tolerated at meetings, um, and not. Um, and in this particular circumstance, uh, I think it is appropriate for the board, um, to, um, comment and weigh in on, what type of, um, whether this individual should be permitted to participate in a form of this nature.
Well, I didn't know we had the right to preclude him, honestly. I thought the sunshine law was-
Really can't from a-
There are, there are, there are-
I never did. I want that perfectly clear. I never did.
Nobody said you did. Nobody said you did, but-
That's the insinuation.
It's the caveat of being, I think-
But my employees, you, you all just instituted a civility policy. It's a shame you have to put something like that in writing, but in this day and time you do. My employees work hard, particularly the females at the front of the building. And I am not going to have them talk to in the kind of foul language that was used in front of them and at them, and have to be afraid. I'm not gonna tolerate that for any of my employees. That is-
And that's the balance-
Inappropriate and inconceivable and just not gonna be tolerated.
Well, that's fine, and you have-
We live in this, in the building all day, every day, every day of the year.
And the safety of-
And the safety of my employees is very important.
Staff is paramount, of course.
Of course. And this building now has it so that if Mr. Wade attends our public meetings, your staff does not have to be afraid. And then, as chairperson, I intend to very strictly enforce our rules and regulations. I understand from our police that there's one warning, and then he's out. So, I don't see a problem with allowing him free access to our board meetings.
He's had access all along. He's had access all along.
He was told he was gonna be searched.
My, my original question to Mr. Douglas went, I, I, I'm thinking back to, as a superintendent, I had employees that trespassed people at school. Under the statute, though, the superintendent would have the directive to, to, to control that with their, they, they extend that authority to their people in the school. to their people in the schools, because their people get trespassed all the time.
Right, right.
What does the Board, what does the Board's role in that, or do we have a role of support that we need our Superintendent to continue to do that? I mean, are we, is it strictly the Superintendent, or is it ultimately the Board on all trespasses?
The, the day-in, day-out, uh, functioning of the, the district offices is under the purview of the Superintendent, and, um, the Superintendent will, will have the discretion to, uh, request a trespass or to remove a trespass. Uh, I think it's helpful for the Board, um, in their, uh, responsibility, um, to give a policy, uh, to establish procedure, uh, to give guidance to the Superintendent on, on what you would like to see in regards to, um, trespass, and it may be, um, that the way the Campbell Building was set up structurally, it was difficult, uh, because the, the, the Board room was in close proximity to staff offices, which Ms. Jorgensen has, you know, highlighted that, that, uh, problem or that issue does not exist in the, in the new space because of their separation. Now, that's not to say, um, that, um, you know, Mr. Wade should be continuing to be trespassed, I mean, that, that ultimately is a decision between the, the Superintendent and, um, law enforcement personnel, or if Mr. Wade wants to contest it, he's certainly, uh, free to do that in the court of law.
And that's, that's kind of, that's paramount of what I, I tried to ask you, if the Superintendent trespasses someone, other than in the public forum, which she has made an allowance for, that I think, you know, is, is most, you know, accommodating, if we were to say, we don't have, we shouldn't, I've never had this when I was school Superintendent, I've never had to deal with something like this, I mean, we've removed people from meetings a time or two, but I didn't, you know, do anything. But if we were to, someone she felt was a clear and present danger, or a, or made people feel uncomfortable, she has all the authority under Florida statutes to make that decision, and our role is a support role for her, or do we ultimately make the decision whether that trespass stays? And that may be something you have to look up further.
Yeah.
The Court makes the decision.
That, that was not quite the, um, the precise question that was asked, that we did research on, uh, and I could certainly, um, l- look at that.
I probably should have sat down with you.
My, um, uh, my initial, um, input on that particular question would be that the Superintendent would, uh, make the decision on those staff offices, uh, being able to, uh, whenever there is, um, a th- a threat or a perceived threat, that the Superintendent, um, acting as, um, the, the head of the, the administration and, and the staff, to be able to, uh, make a judgment call, uh, to say, this person is a threat that warrants a trespass to be placed, and if the person against whom the trespass is issued, uh, would like to take exception to that, they certainly are willing to, they are able to contest that, uh, in the proper judicial, uh, avenues.
Okay, so if, if she did that and the Board came in and tried to say, you need to lift it against Citizen X out there, then that, our, our, there are, we would bring the Board under a lot of, uh, liability if that person went and committed a act of some type, uh, am I right or wrong there? If she had...
I don't think we can tell her that.
I don't think we can, I, I really, I really think, you know, we don't receive trespass notices in a Board meeting, so it really, I, that was my concern, where is the purview of that ultimately, because I have had a lot of questions from Mr. Wade, you know, and, and he's, he's certainly, at times, not been a great fan of mine, and to put it mildly, and at times, he's been very nice, so, I don't, it doesn't make me, it, it, you know, one way or the other, I just, he does have constitutional rights, and I saw in your letter that, but I saw it also in Mr. Paget's letter, it's just not a circumstance or an alternative circumstance that he wants to adhere to, and that's what the Superintendent has, he, he can come, but he might not like the circumstances under which he can come.
And they have to be reasonable circumstances based on the, the conduct of the individual...
Of the crime, that type of thing, and that's a judgment call.
Well, again, he's allowed to come to our meetings, there hasn't been any restriction on him coming to our meetings, because of the way this building is built, him coming to our meetings is not going to break the trespass for the administration, so I don't see why we can't just leave things the way they are and tell him he can come to our meetings.
He can't loiter, that's, that's the issue with the trespass, he can't loiter, he can't, he can't come and, and hang out before, he can't hang out after, that's the general constraint of the trespass, and as far as the Sunshine Law goes, Kathy, I'm not positive, but I think the Sunshine Law is more directed at us doing business openly rather than him having the right to be here, I don't think that's a Sunshine issue, it might be a constitutional issue, but I'm not sure it's a Sunshine issue.
And I, I can research that aspect, too, I, I, uh, offhand do, do not, um, see any, uh, Sunshine, um, application, uh, to that particular situation, but...
Right.
I, I will, um, research that in Mr. Buckles', um, specific request about, uh, where the buck ultimately stops with the issuance and continuation of a trespass.
Very curious about that.
We just have to tell him something because he nags.
Well, I mean, and, and I do want to know on the local preference policy, I'm sorry it takes them long.
And, and we are currently researching that, okay, and...
Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I'm, I'll be very brief, um, I, I really want to say how much I admire this Board, I've been on different conglomerations of people, these guys work hard, they show up at the workshops, I, I decided we're going to have a 1 o'clock workshop before every meeting, and they show up and they work and they, their hearts and souls are involved in it, I think we all get along rather well, even though we have different opinions at times, come from very different backgrounds, but I'm just so proud to work on this Board. We had, uh, a workshop today on our strategic plan, which is very difficult for those of you who know about strategic plans, but we, ours is doing good, um, and we'll be getting a report from the Superintendent in the future on that. Our March 3rd, uh, workshop is on the Solution Center, that's something I've been asking for, for a while, any information that the Superintendent could bring to the Board would be, as to this, the makeup of it now, or maybe future pr- plans, would be appreciated. And I heard from Pat Freeman, they are definitely not renewing their lease at Edge, so that could come into play. On the 17th, um, Mr. Attorney has agreed to help me, or at least watch my, over my shoulder, we're going to do a Sunshine Law workshop, and it's not so much for the Board as it is for those of you in, at staff members who work with the Board, because the Sunshine Law can be very scary, and you're afraid of what you can say to this one and that one and the, and, and it's really, um, not that complicated, but it is a law, so we're going to do that, and then Rhonda's going to be giving us a financial report after that, just kind of a State of the Union, few, maybe a month later, we will get a budget workshop so we can, as a Board, tell her what we think is important, where the money should go, and then, of course, um, the budget workshop when she's come up with the first budget. I, I urge you Board members, if anybody wants a workshop on anything, let me know, and, um, that's all I have to say, Mr. Attorney, do you have any report?
Um, things are doing well on, uh, the legal affairs, uh, we are researching the local preference, uh, you had, um, also asked about the foundation, so we're researching that, too, um, and if there are any other Board members with any other, uh, legal requests, um, please don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent.
Um, at the last meeting, um, Mr. Wright asked about Baker Acted students, so I had a report prepared from August 19th to February 10th, and I can give you another one at the end of the year, and here's a copy, if each of you will take one just for your information, and then, in the future, if you'd like, um, additional information, we could do a workshop, or we could just have a discussion during the Board meeting, whichever you would prefer. Um, and, uh, certainly Jenkins' play was awesome, I went and they had, they bussed in about seven buses of elementary students to the auditorium to see the play, that was very exciting, the kids just loved it, um, I paid for the buses, oh my goodness, anyway, um, it, it was very exciting, and I also went Friday night, I didn't go Saturday night on Valentine's, but I did go Friday night, um, just really exciting to see the students have that opportunity, something they enjoyed, and they did a great job, so I offered, because we had students from most of our elementary schools, including Interlock and Elementary School, and nobody from the south end, so I offered to provide the buses to take the play on the road, and they're going to Miller Intermediate on Friday and do the play for the students at Miller Intermediate, all 4th, 5th, and 6th graders will be able to see it, and it's really, it's, it's very exciting, and they're looking forward to that, so, anyway, our effort to help support some of the things that are done, um, in the arts in the schools. Uh, also, I, just so that you know, I often do, well, I don't often, but when I'm asked by schools who are doing something like this play, or like Mr. Pignato and his upcoming play, or, uh, like our, our Cambridge program, they call and they say, can you do a message? Now, they can do a message at their school for the, the parents who have given phone numbers and the students that go to their schools. In order to do the whole district, they call downtown, and so I have continued to do that, it's called a Connect 5 message, and you've probably gotten some of them, and I just need for people to know that if they are receiving messages and they don't want to receive them, or don't have children in the system any longer, or what have you, all they have to do is call our offices and we, and tell us that they want their number removed, and we will remove it. Um, you know, it's like, you, you can't win, it's like, when you're not given messages, people say, well, we didn't know anything about that, and then when you do, people complain because they don't want the messages, I can't win. So, if you are getting a message from me, or from any of our schools, and you don't want to receive the messages or the information from the schools, then please just call us and give us your phone number so we can remove it from our list, at some point you gave it to us, that's why you're getting a message.
Yeah, I mean, I just hang up if I don't want to hear it, I mean, it's no big deal.
Well, that's what most people do, but apparently there's a whole, you know, I really hate Facebook, I hate Facebook, uh, you know, I got more to do than sit around and talk on Facebook, but there's a lot of people who do, I just don't have time, and I'd rather read a book, I'm old-fashioned, I like to hold my book, anyway, so, but I don't have time to look up people on Facebook and say, hey, I'm sorry, but the bottom line is, if you are getting messages and you don't want them, please just call us and give us your phone number so we can take it off of our call list. Uh, also, our Florida National Guard unit, as Mr. Wright said, will be, uh, deploying on Friday, February 27th, they have built into their schedule an hour to, uh, come to, um, our, um, amphitheater right here at the base of the bridge, and we are going to get the information out to the community, we worked on it today because we just really got this information, we have a flyer that we'll be getting out to the chamber to send to businesses, to all of the local area clubs, from women's clubs to Qantas, to Rotary, uh, VFW, all, all of the military organizations, we want everybody that wants to be there to please come and fill up this, this amphitheater, to send them off, um, I have invited all three of the ROTCs from the three high schools, and, uh, certainly they will send permission slips home so that parents can sign that their children can come, also, the same with the band at Interlock and High School to play some patriotic songs, um, there will be others who will be, uh, singing, we will have dignitaries here, uh, it's sure to be, uh, an amazing send-off of a unit from right here in Putnam County, um, not something that we are looking forward to having them go to Afghanistan, but certainly, this is our community's opportunity to show their support for our military with, uh, something that they've been asked to do, um, and I'm looking forward to that, so do mark your calendars, 12:30 PM, Friday, February 27th, and I'll get more information out to you for that. Uh, the last thing I have, um, is, Ms. Crawford, you had talked about the drug issues that our students have, I've asked Michelle Garner to come and talk to you, Michelle, if you'd come on up.
I didn't know.
Uh, she works with Creating Lasting Family Connections, she works well, she works with, she works with the Sheriff's Department, she worked, she does a lot for us in conjunction with the Sheriff's Office, it's a partnership with the Sheriff's Office that we have, Michelle Garner works so hard on so many issues with our students...
I see her at truancy every month.
And I wanted her to briefly kind of answer the question that you had about some of the things we do with our students.
Um, Michelle Garner, General Crime Prevention Office, I did take the time to, um, give each of you Board members one of these, I don't think you maybe had seen one of those before.
I didn't.
Um, it's a little bit about what we do, and, uh, Ms. Chriswell told me I could have an hour tonight.
I saved the best for last.
Just kidding, um, and I had actually asked her if maybe we could do a workshop with you all to show you what all we do, there's just a broad scope and a depth of what we have in our office and what we offer to you, but I can tell you the base of what we do is trying to determine and assist kids with any barriers that they would have to education, whether it's substance abuse, mental health, um, whether it's with truancy, or behavior issues or problems, or legal problems, so we encompass them, and not only that, but when they come to our office for diversion services, or the nighttime services, they have to come with their family, so it's all systemic, and we usually treat the whole family, or work with the whole family, including their siblings, um, and as far as our drug information classes, um, we have a certified addictions prevention professional that teaches those classes, she's also a licensed mental health, um, professional, and she is the regional director of, um, CDS Family and Behavioral Health Services, and the, the local, um, I'm trying to think of all that she is, she is the local, um, director of the Interface Youth Shelter here in town, so she works and partners with us on all of those drug-related issues that we, that we have, those young people that come in.
But I just wanted you to hear from Michelle, because it's huge what they do, so, not only that, which is reactive, there are proactive...
Absolutely, and that's what would take me the whole hour.
How about April 21st?
Um, that's fine, no, I don't, I don't need to check, I will make myself available.
We don't have a workshop scheduled for that day, I would love to bring you in, and, you know, you know what makes me crazy sometimes, is I hear about this great thing you're doing, and then I go over here and like, there's a church doing the same thing, and then there's a community organization, I don't know how many backpack programs we have going, but it's more than one I've heard of, so I don't understand how we can just get it all together, and it seems like you are doing that more than anyone I've seen.
I can tell you that this particular office, this establishment, um, the partnership between the Superintendent and the Sheriff has been, it's, it's 25 years in the making, and that was in our little history part of the book.
Right.
Um, I can also tell you that there are many law enforcement agencies, school districts, that have come to our office to see, okay, you guys undoubtedly have it right, what can we do to copy and to mirror that?
That's great.
Um, and again, the, the, the list of services and the scope and the depth that we have is just, it would take a long time for me to really give you a really good idea of what we do, um, what all we do for these...
I think, would we like that?
Yeah, I'd love it.
All right, so let's do April 21st, um, if you have a problem with that, you can get, get with me, otherwise, we will have you 1 o'clock here.
Yeah, thank you, and Ms., uh, Superintendent, I thank you as well.
Thank you.
She's a very big supporter, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, Michelle.
Very much.
You will be amazed at the, at what she brings you and the information and all the data.
It's going to be really...
Assistant Lieutenant, the last time they called up the National Guard here in Phalatka was the beginning of the first Iraq War, so our President may have something up his sleeve, we'll have to see what follows next, you never know.
We have, um, some employees with the Putnam County Sheriff's Office that belongs to that unit, we have, we have, um, a lot of...
Joey Corrigan.
You know, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a tough thing, and again, they need to know that this community supports them, so I'm looking forward to that, that's all I have today, thank you.
If there's no further business to come before this Board, meeting is adjourned, thank you all for coming, and...
Don't turn them off, I have to go to the bathroom.
Charlie, good to see you.
Good to see you, Terry.
That's just a silence at work. Great job, Charlie.
Thank you, Kathy.